We have about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So that was pretty good, yeah, pretty good turnout.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, really nice.
If we have questions about this, do we ask them?
Matter of fact, over to one on Sherman, I got up on the roof and ran across.
Nothing says you can't ask them.
Okay.
Thirty years.
I don't have any, I'm just curious on procedure.
I felt guilty because I didn't recognize him.
I'm just overwhelmed since they've been the board. Reading was fair.
Yeah, I did all my, I did all my homework.
Well, I'm just, I'm impressed with this fancy schmancy new graphic we have here. This is, this is, you know, color and. The only thing missing, we should have some background music with some trumpets or. Are we about ready?
Yep.
Let me take my typical pre-game drink here.
Yeah, sign up and so if they need any help on the golf.
Oh, actually, I don't have to put my phone on silent.
As long as I don't have to get out of the wood like.
All right, where's my agenda?
Yeah, I had a real good time.
Yeah, until I dig it out, thank you.
Keep moving.
All right, you guys are good? We are great. Good evening, I'd like to call, to order the May first, two thousand eighteen, the planning commission for Holly Township meeting. Thank everybody for attending tonight, and we will start with our roll call plays. I'm sorry, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, let's do a roll call, please.
Tony Engelberg.
Here.
Lloyd Kerney.
Here.
Glenn Mitchell.
Hartley here.
Pat Feeney.
Here.
A.C. Allra.
Here.
Stacy Steckly.
Here.
Ted Gersky.
Can I get a motion to excuse Ted, please? Thank you.
Support.
Okay, I got a motion by A.C., support by Stacy to excuse Ted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Agenda approval, I would like to flip-flop new business and old business tonight, only because we have the folks from the fire hall here, and like to ask them to say a few things, and there's no reason for them to be sitting here listening to us debating illuminations of signs.
Did you say?
You need a motion on that?
Yeah, can I get a motion, please?
I have a motion that we flip-flop new business and old business then.
I'm not sure about this wording of that, but.
Yeah, well, it works, it works. Okay, so we have a motion by Pat and support by Lloyd to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we are at public comment for items on the agenda only. Ms. Angela, would you like to say anything? Hearing none, we will move forward. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes from April third, two thousand eighteen. Can I get a motion, or if there are any comments or questions?
Not that it's part of the minutes here, but I was puzzled when we went to township meeting that they actually had three versions of the Woodlands ordinance, when I thought we only passed one pass on to them, but that's just a comment, I guess, that really.
That was the op, the board had the option of doing that.
Well, I would say it was the option, but I thought we recommended one thing.
We did.
That was confusing to me, which was.
Right, right.
Saying really, there was three things. But anyway, that would be part of the minutes, I guess, I guess.
Okay. Anybody else?
Move it in place and file.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Glenn, can I have support?
Support.
Okay, motion by Glenn, support by Lloyd to approve the, of minutes of April third, two thousand eighteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We have no communications, so we will now move on to new business, Michigan Renaissance Festival Special Land Use and Site Plan Application. Our main objective tonight is to set a public hearing, but Mike, if you've got any comments first?
Sure. So, for those of you who are new with us, we review the Renaissance Festival every year. They get a special land use from the township. This year, this, so typically, special land use encompasses just the festival itself, right? So, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday for August to October. Last year, they came in after the festival to ask for additional special land use for their zombie wall.
Yep.
And it was like a haunted house type event.
Like a laser tag.
Yeah, they had something, two events, I remember. So, this year, right, we asked them, all right, we know this is going to happen, let's do it all at once. Additionally, you know, they have in the past held small weddings there. Well, we wanted to make that part of the special land use, so we know what's going on, so that, again, right, because of where it's located, traffic can be an issue. Now, typically, weddings aren't, you know, that big of a deal, but, you know, we know all the uses they want to do, so let's get it all out in the open, get it on the plan, so we know, you know, what, so everyone knows what's going on. So, that's part of what you're going to be seeing next, next month. They have made some changes to the site plan compared to past years. A lot of it is actually safety-related, and, you know, the fire guys can, can speak on this a little bit more, but there is a second gate entrance. All interiors are a lot, right? No new curb cuts are, are being proposed in Dixie. But overall, they've been working really well with the township. Last year, we did inspections of all their buildings, you know, for compliance with property maintenance codes. So, you know, each year, they've been doing a little bit more, all right? They have a five-year ongoing plan with the fire guys to, and they've been addressing all those concerns. So, you know, it's, I think we had one bad year, and since then, things have been improving every year.
I think going from year, going year to year has been a big help with that. Gentlemen, if you'd like, step up to the microphone and introduce yourselves, and if you've got anything to share with us, we'd like to hear it.
Doug Smith, Deputy Chief, North Oakland County Fire Authority. Matt Lyle, Assistant Chief. We work year-round with the festival, trying to improve the safety, and then annually, we have a kickoff meeting to set the agenda of what items they're going to take care of for the upcoming season. We've got an overall plan that's in place. Last year, we had two additional hydrants put into the facility, as well as an additional fire break. What we're trying to do is limit the spread of fire to six thousand square foot modules, separated by a twenty to twenty-four foot break. So, to, to do that, they either have to install a two-hour firewall, which is pretty onerous, because you've got to go beyond these small buildings, and you need to go above, and you've got this structure. And the cost of them are fairly substantial. They found that, up until this point, it's been more cost-effective to buy one of the crafters out and demolish their booth to get the clear space. So, that's the approach they've been taking. So, they'll do another one of those this year for us. What we've had a concern over the years is the occupancy load in the northeast quadrant of the festival. It's where all of the people queue up, they wait for the, the cannon to go off, and then they flood into the facility. So, now, you're wall-to-wall people in the most congested area. And what we've talked about in the past, is there a way to spread the people out from the beginning? Well, they do this in their other facilities, such as Florida. They'll have a secondary gate, so that people, say, in the south parking lot, would come in where the campground facility is. And we kind of support that, and that's kind of what they put into this plan. Just so you know, we're a big believer in that, get the people dispersed right from the beginning. The second thing is, we've been very concerned with the congestion in the south parking lot, from the standpoint of only one entrance coming in. And we had, we've asked over the last four years to get an emergency access gate off of Holdridge Road, much like we have off of Laring. It's not used for anything other than emergency vehicles, we're the only ones with the key to it. So, we were kind of pushing them for that this year. Their response was, they've applied for it twice and have been turned down both times, so we kind of like that.
So, that, that is exactly what they said. Now, that's not necessarily, you know, how, I think it was perceived when they presented it. I think the way, you know, they initially brought it up to the planning commission was, this is another ac- access.
Yes.
And that this was not a emergency-only access. I think, you know, as Doug is saying, from a fire safety perspective, it is needed. But again, this is purely emergency access.
And it's really for medical emergencies, heart attacks, the delay of getting an ambulance in among the traffic that's trying to get in there to park. And, and we talked a little bit about traffic flow, that we want to be able to get around the whole facility, and they'll take care of that. The, the next issue is expanding a special use permit to include all events that may take place, including weddings. So, what our concern is, is not hearing about a wedding that's going to occur in November, in November, because there's certain things. You've now, the, the amount of daylight is much less than it is in September. So, if you're going to use the castle, then there's some upgrades that have to take place, such as emergency lighting, maybe exit signs, and some control of the exits, which they agreed to do.
Yep.
And then, to limit the occupants in the building, because it becomes a place of public assembly. So, much like they do on their masquerade ball or whatever, they'll set up a temporary tent, so that the people will not be in a framed building attached to a restaurant without a sprinkler system. So, they've agreed to do that, too. So, that's, from our standpoint, getting it out early is the way to go.
So, you would like us to have them submit to you a calendar, or at least give you notification when they're going to have weddings or anything going on there?
Well, now that we know that they're officially going to try to do them, we're good with that.
Okay.
We've, as part of our agreement, they said, all right, if that's the route we go, we will install the emergency lighting, and we will limit the occupancy load to under a hundred in the castle. That was, you know, two things that should be.
And they're going to provide administrative notice, right? So, again, this way, it doesn't have to come back to the planning commission every time. We know ahead of time, these are activities that are going to go on there. They'll notify, you know, the clerk, and so the township knows what's going on, and everyone's fully aware.
And we, Matt runs a permitting process with every crafter. They have to apply to the fire department for a permit to operate. Matt meets personally with them, goes through a safety checklist, and it's really sort of a self-funding thing, that they cover our labor costs to, to do that. We will continue our fire watch that we provide. We have one person full-time, and then a second person part of the time. And what we do on that is, we go through and we inspect every food service area prior to them opening, making sure their fans are on, making sure that all of the volunteers or groups that come in understand where the fire extinguishers are, which one you use for a grease fire, where the manual releases are, and we go through a mini-training program. Then, we make regular stops. For example, you know, we found things where exits may get blocked for whoever knows reasons, we can correct it right on the spot. So, that's kind of our approach.
Are there AEDs there?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we actually have, how many medical people are on staff? Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, plus us.
Okay.
So, in connection with the fire watch, who's carrying radios, they may come upon a medical emergency before the medical people do, so they're trained as well, so. Matt, would you like to say?
Anybody got questions?
How involved is it for this emergency exit? I mean, you're saying they got turned down, I mean, is this something that could be done this, this year if it needed, I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
Before they opened up, I mean, nothing?
This is not a big deal.
And not a cost factor that should be that major to them, or?
They probably need two hundred bucks, three hundred bucks worth of gravel, set of fence, a controlled access gate.
Right.
Maybe a culvert, and that's it.
Yeah, it's more of a, a timing issue, getting the appropriate people on-site to do the work, you know, based on availability.
We're pushing for two additional hydrants, and we've already met with the directional board. The trouble is, is these contractors never show up.
Right.
They say they will, and they don't show up.
Right.
So, that's what we were faced with last year. They got it done, but it was three days before they opened.
Right. But, yeah, I was just wondering, and just to clarify, who were they saying was turning them down?
I think there was a perception that the, the public outcry from the people on Holdridge Road, believing that it would be an entrance and an exit for the bulk of the traffic.
And it was in conjunction with the lot on Laring. Right. It was just.
Right.
Everything at once.
But I mean, nothing, nothing by any official body that said, no, we're not going to let you do it, you, the township or.
They, they withdrew and amended their, their plan, and.
Okay.
You know, so a decision didn't need to be made.
Okay.
And I don't recall, I recall that whole thing, I don't recall them ever offering to put a gate. I think they were, at that time, we're just going to put a row up.
Well, I, I think the way the site plan was shown, it was not shown as emergency-only. Right. I think they had mentioned it during the meeting that they'd be willing to do it, but with everything going on, you know, it wasn't a situation where, you know, you could just make those changes on the fly. And by where they were in the season, you know, they needed to get their approvals, so they could open on time, and. We, we, our relationship has, has steadily been improving. And, you know, like, the, the past two years, we've actually received binders with information, right? Everything correlated with every, with our checklist, and so, you know, it, it's, everything's been improving.
Stacy?
I was going to say, they had it in conjunction with parking, if I'm remembering correctly, with Holdridge.
It was, it was a lot.
It was, there was a lot, it wasn't just meaning emergency exit.
Correct.
It was more.
That may have been when they clear cut, when they wanted to add that additional parking.
Well, that was at Laring.
But that night, I mean, that meeting was.
It was that night, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we like, we were dealing with a lot. Glenn, you got anything, any question?
Pan, that, well, just about these issues?
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing.
Lloyd?
No.
A.C.? All right, so at this point, then, we need a, I need a motion to set a public hearing for our next meeting.
So, maybe my question was, I noticed the dates, I thought it was normally only Saturdays and Sundays, and the last four dates, or the last dates are actually Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
That, that.
No, no.
They have.
Nope, nope. It's the last days, it's twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirty of September. I just wondered if there was something different happening, I may not make any difference to anything, but in the middle, except they were first, second, third.
It was a ladies' and veterans' day.
The Friday is a really low attendance.
Yeah.
It's really like special groups.
Okay, so I just wanted, I didn't remember if they were open on those dates, so I just wondered.
Right.
It was the last weekend, so it's, it was special.
Right.
All right, that was my question, I just noticed it.
So, our next meeting is June fifth. Can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing?
No.
Okay, so I have a move by Stacy, support by A.C. to set a public hearing for the Michigan Renaissance Festival Site Plan Review. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll see you back next month. Okay, moving on to old business, the side ord, sign ordinance amendments, I'll say that three times fast. Mike?
All right, so last month, we talked about sign types, and so this month, we're starting to put regulations associated with those sign types. So, what you have in front of you is sort of a combination of language from the existing sign ordinance and proposed language. And so, as we go through this, you know, if you have questions, stop, let's talk about it, and let's just start. So, the first, you know, starting on page four, we start talking about sign locations, right? So, this states that signs are prohibited in the right-of-way, right? With certain exceptions, you know, like road signs, government signs, typical signs that you find out there. We talk about projections, and this is currently in the ordinance, where it shall not project above or beyond the highest point of a roof or parapet. And then, we talk about that they have to be in good working order. So, on page five is when we actually get into the regulations themselves.
Can we go back to?
Yep.
Number four, it sounds like the building inspector has a sole discretion, you couldn't appeal? If it says no sign, no sign should be permitted in a location that is, on a sole discretion of the building inspector, that means there's no appeal, or if you disagree with what they say?
So, in other words, you want to know if there, if there's an appeal process?
Usually, there'd be something that you'd say, disagree with this person's findings, is there someplace I can go to? It sounds, it's sole discretion, it says there.
Who would be the body for, other than court?
Well, zoning board of appeals would be.
Yeah.
Appeal to, right? Because that's your board that you appeal decisions made by, by officials relating to land use.
Whether it be us or the zoning, it doesn't matter?
So, there should be zoning.
Yeah, appeals. Good point, yeah.
Should there be something in there to say, you do have some, yeah, some appeal rights or something? Because it, you know, normal is to be fine, but I would assume, once in a while, you might disagree with that, inspector, that it doesn't create hazards here.
All right, I will figure that out further.
Okay.
All right, so yard signs, which I think, we've had some discussion on these. Non-commercial, right? So, essentially, these are your, you know, your wire signs that you're putting into the ground. And we're looking at residential zoning districts. So, the, the first number that jumps out at us, that's being proposed, is the maximum number per lot, right, is four. You know, you see the, the example we have here is, you know, these are going to be your political signs. And the, the trouble is, how do you regulate political signs and still maintain this content neutrality? Well, you know, you call them non-commercial signs, and then you put a restriction on the number that, that are on the lot.
So, this is garage sale signs, right? Wouldn't this also be?
Well, that would be, that would fall under.
That's some, yeah, something.
Commercial, on-premise commercial signs?
Yeah, yeah, these are non-commercial.
Garage sales aren't commercial?
No, no, no. What he's talking about here are, are non-commercial.
So, the garage sale, what he's saying is, it's a residential, so therefore, it's not commercial, because it's not.
So, so the message on the sign, advertising a garage sale.
You're saying the sign itself is commercial for a sale.
Right, correct. As opposed to a, a message sign, right? So.
Pete's birthday party would be non-commercial, you know, just, or Jim and Bob's wedding, that sort of thing.
I guess I did, wouldn't have realized garage sales would be under commercial listing, that's, that's, I guess, my, and when you say per lot, if I own a house with a lot next to it, that means I could do eight? Or is that per residence?
No, I, it's, it's per property.
Per parcel, then?
Yep. So, what, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, do you feel comfortable with that? Do you, do you feel it's an appropriate number, or too high, or? You know, I think that, you know, if.
Or I think you're, I think you're getting to the point of a little saturation, plus you're getting to, as they say, distraction, too. So, it stops, start reading four, five signs. Yeah, I say four. Where have you seen other communities, does that fit in pretty much in the same light?
So, yeah, you know, this is sort of the, the model that we work off of, this four. So, just, so, you know, right? There, some communities, right, in addition to this, have, where they have, like, what they call event-based signs, that can be up for thirty days at a time, right? So, you know, typically, you would be allowed two signs, but then, if you want, during like election season, that would be your event, right? You could have more signs during, you know, a certain period of time. The issue with that becomes enforcement, right? Because if, if you're not at that site, you know, when they put it up, how, how do you know? You know, and, and essentially, it becomes, you know, you're just going to allow them, right? So, just having a hard max, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, you know, is sort of a more efficient way to do it. All right, and then, so, yep.
I was going to say, so a scenario that I can think of is, at my daughter's open house. Okay, so, I had to break off areas into, this is yard games, this is food, this is this, this is this, and I, I know I had more than four signs in my yard at that time. Now, granted, it's for a day. So, chances of somebody coming by and giving me a problem for, for yard signs for that type of thing, but would that, would I be in violation at that point? I know, going, I know on the technical, I'm just trying to make, have it make sense in my head.
Wouldn't that fall under directional?
So, there, so there's going to be another clause in here, right? It's called a substitution clause.
Okay.
Right, so you're going to be allowed to have non-commercial and commercial sign, right? So, you, you, with the substitution clause, you can take a, a commercial sign and turn it into a non-commercial sign, but not vice versa.
Okay.
So, that would give you a little bit more freedom. I, you know, I don't know where those signs are, in the front yard or in the back?
They're kind of all spread out the whole yard, so.
Yeah, you know, I.
You probably don't consider those signs unless they're.
But then again, they're not enough to, there's no.
From an enforcement standpoint, if I was to come across that, I would obviously know that you're having a party.
And then, it's just a conversation.
You'd come in, ask for a piece of cake.
To be honest, I would, if you had a thing that said, I'm having an open house, I'm just going to drive by, I'm not going to really worry for denoting food from your party games and whatnot.
Right, right, okay.
And, and I would not imagine that you would get a complaint on that either. I mean, we've enforced complaint-based a lot, but while I'm doing complaint-based, I am noticing others, so it's, I've tried to work more on blight and signs recently, but that's not something that I would choose to enforce.
And it's just, I'm just trying to.
Unless there was a complaint that I had to answer.
Well, I think the complaint would probably not be the signs.
They were not taken down.
Right, and so if they just leave it in my yard, then.
Okay, well, now that you're speaking of like, just a thought occurred to me, if you were having a garage sale, and you had signs that were directing, that would, you would be concerned with the garage sale sign, and how many of those there were, you wouldn't, like, don't park on the grass, park over here, that wouldn't be a concern of yours?
Even then, no, because then, that's actually for the health and safety and welfare of the community, because you're making sure that you're directing people where to go, that which is going to reduce accident chance.
But if they left the.
If they let them sit there for a long.
The yard sale sign up for months on, on them, that would be your enforcement there.
And they have to be maintained in, in good condition.
Right.
Right? So, if they're getting all weathered and torn, they're no longer being kept in good condition.
Right.
So, they would have to, you know, this party.
Stacy, did you even think that you might want to ask if there's a sign ordinance before you put them up?
And that was, that was kind of where my thought process was coming from. It was just a matter of, I was just going to, I was just doing directions for, you know, for my party, and that's where, and that's exactly where it came from. That's not even something I would have realized that I would even need to evaluate.
Well, yeah, and, you know, what, three years ago, it wouldn't have been an issue, right? Because communities would have automatically exempted them. But then the Supreme Court ruled about this content neutrality, and you got to treat all signs equal, and can't, you know, regulate on the message, and, you know, that has caused issues for every single community in the entire country, right? So, it's not limited to Michigan, Oakland County, Holly, it's.
For sure, yeah.[1737.44]
Everyone.
Well, I think if these are kind of the norms in the area, then why should we, why should we break it?
Right.
Right.
Alright.
Does that actually be five feet from the public right of way?
So, yeah.
Just in the lot line?
Oh, it fits.
Well, that's something we should, it should be from the lot line also, right? Because they're not allowed in the right of way, right? Because we've already established that.
And that, yeah, also.
Yeah, and, and it's in the ordinance itself. And then, so how far off from your neighboring properties, right? Because you could have a situation where someone has a message for their neighbor.
Right.
You don't want to put necessarily right on the, on the property line, so, you know. At least it's a little something. But, you know, that's sort of the intent of that. So on the next page, page six, we talk about on-premise commercial, right? So this is your for sale, your garage sale. You know, those types of signs. Maximum number would be one per lot. Maximum height would be five feet. So essentially you would be allowed to have your typical real estate signs for a residential.
I would be worried doing that on a corner lot. Because a Realtor would want to, especially if you're talking about a large parcel, you would want to have multiple, two.
So would you want to say the one per frontage, they wrote, or just two in general, or?
Either one would satisfy.
For long.
Yeah, I think we're kind of in an area, like you said, where you have large lots, yeah.
And, and if you're driving, you know, I can think of like Fish Lake, right? If we make that a forty-eight per lot, right? If you're driving down Grange Hall, you wouldn't see the one on Fish Lake, you would need to put one on Grange Hall as well, so.
I think frontage makes sense.
I like frontage.
Yeah.
You know, because, I mean, if you do two, then if it's a block.
I have to give you a thumbs up for the Canadian content in this picture, by the way.
I like the not content.
Yeah. What about if you're trying to sell a vehicle, car or truck, does that fall under the sign ordinance or?
Actually, the sale of vehicles is restricted on our roadways as it is now within the front yard setback, which is seventy-five feet from the public right of way. So I don't think as far as, but he, I think in here he does address signage posted on a vehicle for commercial use.
Yeah, so that's intended for, you know, you know.
Business.
Not, yeah, exactly.
Right.
For business use, right? To make sure that's licensed, operational, and a parking spot, as opposed to per, perpendicular?
Yeah.
To, to the road, taking up three parking spots, you know, that's not what you want.
But putting a for sale by owner sign on the side of my car window is fine.
We will make sure that it is fine.
You have to be seventy-five? Well, no, not, what are you saying? No, that's, that's, what's that?
That's our current, I was answering Lori's question, that our current ordinance states seventy-five feet, which is the front yard setback from the public right of way.
That's a long way. I've never seen a for sale, car for sale that far back.
Well, that's because you can't see it so many.
Do you find that we have a major problem with cars for sale?
There are some parcels that are habitual with that, that I do get complaints on.
Yeah, I could picture one of those spots, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. And certain pockets of neighborhoods you will find that.
Where they're doing it continuously, it's not just.
Right, ones that end up sitting there where their tires are flat. And really, if you would want me to be more strict on that, I still feel that, you know, if they're there for a short period of time and it's effective, and as long as it's not impeding health and safety.
I think you're probably familiar with the one on Grange Hall, they sell cars, tractors, and it's always the same spot.
Yes, right there on the corner, yeah. That's, I enforced on him actually last year, and he's been very, very receptive and going to work well.
Yeah, that's, like I said, it's on assuming someone has their car up there and you see it a couple of weeks, you're not going to bother.
Oh, right, yeah.
See it there two months from now, that's a different story.
Well, you know, and even at a few weeks, you want to make sure that the tires are inflated and that there's not grass growing up around it, because we do have a tendency, some on Grange Hall do that.
Well, in a lot of cases, people selling their cars will put the sign on the car and still drive it until it's sold, so.
Yeah, I think the issue is always that, you know.
I wouldn't.
Aren't doing it for just personal use, right? It's almost a business that they do.
Right.
Which even from a home occupation standpoint, your home occupation is not to change the nature of your property.
Right.
And it's not to change the, the traffic and whatnot to your property, so there would be two ways to enforce upon that, I feel.
So what we, is frontage is what, is like a hundred, one for a hundred feet or something like that, or is that maximum? Is that what we're back to?
Oh, yeah, that, that's a great question. I was gonna ask that too. Yeah, frontage, does that mean, are we looking like as a corner lot, or are we looking at like they have?
Feet.
Yeah, feet or something. What would you say, Stacy? I mean, what would be something that you think a Realtor would look at on something like that, that would be?
I think a hundred feet is not necessary. I think that if you have a very large parcel, they're going to want to put a couple, you know, just to. It's marketing, right?
Right.
So it's like, I want, I want you to see it, and then I want you to have enough time to forget it, so when you see it again.
Right.
It sparks that, that feeling in you, so.
You do it based on acreage?
Yeah, how do you determine when that happens? It's going to be different for different people.
Yeah.
I would say feet, but I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say a hundred.
But that's not much space.
I guess what would be the, what would be the common, I said not common to.
One way to do it is by the minimum lot width of the lot of the zoning district.
Okay.
It depends, right? So it's different, right? So if you have, you know, smaller lots, right, you don't necessarily need to have them as, right?
Right, yeah, I wouldn't think you would need.
I guess you could have it closer, right, on, on our whatever lot than a ag lot.
Can you do it based on acreage? You know, every, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to get out and measure that, but.
So, right, I think it's an important part, right? How is enforcement going to come back? You know, if you limit it to numbers.
That's easy.
Right, that's easy. I can go out and I can count, right? I see one, I see two. You know, if you look, you know, a hundred feet, is that seventy-five, is it a hundred and fifty-eight? Real estate, I don't know, right?
I don't know how you are with measuring this eyeballing distance.
I've got a wheel. It's a 3D laser.
Would it be opening up too much of a can of worms to say, to split it a little bit more and say Realtors are allowed to put up two signs on a piece of?
I guess after the content issue, right? It used to be so much easier.
Because that would be the easiest way to say, you know, because it's a temporary thing, at least the Realtor hopes that's going to be the case, you know. Can we do it based on the agricultural lots are going to be your bigger lots?
So, let's, let's take it back to what's allowed right now, right? If I'm not mistaken, ones allowed right now?
One for a lot.
Just one for a lot.
For the intended, yeah, for the intended sale.
That's it. So by allowing, by frontage, you're already increasing.
Allowed more.
Above what's allowed right now. And, I mean, have you had a lot of people complain, you know, saying you need more signs?
No, actually, I've had Realtors that take it upon themselves to have as many signs and put them in the public right of way, but.
And not take them down when things sell.
Yeah, and, you know, and even for instance, right now, I talked with the gentleman on Fagan Road whose for sale sign has been sitting in the brush and had told me that he would put it back in. Well, it just so happened when the combine came in, it knocked it down, and then when the tractor came in, it knocked it down. That's the only time I really get complaints about for sale signs unless they're right smack dab in the ditch or, you know, really.
Black in the view or something.
Close to the road.
Right.
From listening to your conversation, I'm wondering if you mean something similar, but a downsized version for these smaller signs or the type of signs is the same that you have for the freestanding signs, allowing it, two freestanding signs permitted per premises to which front on two public roads.
I was wondering something.
So then possibly maybe some verbiage you would want to add to this if you're wanting to allow for larger parcels to have two that are on a corner.
That sounds like that might work.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one of those things, I don't think you're gonna totally ever make everybody happy, and I'm sure somewhere down the line, we're gonna find someone, gonna push signs, like, well, I had two signs on either end of this parcel, and it's like.
Well, and you, and I do agree, you want to be able to, you know, encourage sale and visibility within your township, and that verbiage would be an easy way to.
Yeah, why don't we lift that and put it in?
Yeah, I think that would solve.
Cut and paste?
Alright. So another way to help. So the next is off-premise commercial signage for residential zoning districts. So essentially. It's allowing someone to have a commercial message on their.
Deciding, you know, window people.
Exactly. You know, so again, right, the idea is to allow it, but limit it, you know, to, to one per lot. And keep it in the same size and scale as the other signs that would be allowed, but because of the commercial nature of it, limit it to thirty days at a time. Thirty-day placement during an entire calendar year.
Now, my question is on that. Is it clear that is, I mean, do we limit the commercial signs to what we just said, like a little, can we? Or is that not accepted, you know, work done on a house, they're advertising what they've done on the house? Can they put other commercial signs up there? That's what I.
Yeah, they could put up, you know.
Okay, and we really can't stop them from doing that.
You could put up a McDonald's.
A sign, hiring sign or something, okay.
Whatever, you know.
Right, okay.
Big Mac, you know.
And we, and we would have no ground to stand on if we were to put something in.
Beyond the thirty-day restriction, right?
Alright.
But again, right, having some sort of additional.
So if a McDonald's manager wanted to put a sign out in front, hiring at the local McDonald's, you could do that as long as it's not all these requirements here.
Correct. So again, right, that's why you're trying to limit the size of it.
Right, right.
Right? The location, the time, that it's out, because you can't regulate the message itself, so.
I, I was thinking more along the lines, and actually, I really don't have an issue with it, but I was thinking more along the lines that you would have someone, a home-based business or something that might put out there.
That's onsite. That would be an onsite.
That would be onsite.
As versus offsite, so, you know, we'll, we'll double check to see how.
Yeah, that's.
Pat and I have a confession to make. We worked at Christmas in Action Saturday, and we had about six signs in the front yard. Voting our sponsors. We even had our pictures taken in front of us.
But that's in the village. Yeah, the village, I don't know what the village, right? Yeah, the village has all different, actually, I think they're more. Yeah, the village is more restrictive.
They didn't capture.
But that, that would fall under temporary then?
Obviously, one day or maybe a few days.
Two days, yeah.
So, and we're also not limiting how many lots, correct? So if you have a construction company and they can convince everyone that they want, that they want to put a sign in their yard, then they're, then they're fine.
Matter of fact, on my drive to Wixom every morning, there is a place that does that exactly. They have it right down the road, and it's like, yeah, I know exactly where he's at, going down the road, so.
But because you can't limit the content, you cannot limit.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like realistically, there's going to be some unintended, there are people who can find the loopholes.
Oh, well, that, yeah, that's.
But.
Well, I was more on the other basis, I just want to see someone saying, hey, I'm advertising my own handyman service or something, I didn't, you know.
Right, yeah.
What's any difference in wall side being next door, you know?
Right.
So for sale for property, which one of these fits? Because to me, we talked about on-premise commercial.
Correct.
To me, that's off-premise because a real estate company isn't there.
But you're advertising the house.
Their product, their product is the house, you know, where. It'd be like if they put a for sale by owner sign up.
Well, no, even if they, even a real estate company.
Sure.
Because there's, the advertising is for the property itself.
Right, that's their product.
It's the product.
Okay.
Yep.
Is three square feet large enough? I mean, what is that? That's like.
Yeah, it's still.
Little tiny thing. I mean, you see that at fifty-five miles an hour down the road.
That would slow everybody down.
Pretty small front. This seems very restrictive.
Yeah, that does seem pretty small.
It could be one foot by three feet, or it could be eighteen inches by eighteen inches, or sixteen or something.
What is the normal size for like, say, a political sign?
Well, it depends on what you order, I guess.
Yeah, so I'd be, well, I mean, I guess what I'd say is what would?
This would probably like two by three here, so this would be like, I would think a six square foot sign.
Yeah.
And see, that's only half that size, so it wouldn't be visible almost.
Put a couple of letters on it.
I, well, six square feet, that's, I think that's reasonable also. I, I think the three square feet is, is the small, right, and the six is the next size that they offer.
We have five, and what would be four that? Should we just stick with five, or should we go with six? I mean, we should be consistent.
Oh, we have six here, too.
Oh, sorry, yeah, six. So should we go with six on this too? Because I don't see why this would be that much difference.
Yeah.
We're only doing one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, and it's temporary, so, I mean, thirty days, so. Stacy?
Just to throw something in here, on-premise is commercial and off-premise is commercial. What if the for sale sign said, two houses down?
Then it's off-premise.
It's off-premise.
So they could do that.
For a limited amount of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, because you'll see open house.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So you have the house, the sign that's in the yard, and then they'll do like the flags in the open house on the entrance to the subdivision, so.
And usually they're pretty good at pulling, putting those down and pulling them off. So, now, there's a situation where I'm sure Amy's not going to sit there and count, okay, they were there three days last month and start doing that, so it's, it's going to be enforced with reasonable, reasonable intentions if the sign's been sitting out there for six weeks straight.
Right.
Well, it's like Horizon, I know on the entrance to my subdivision, which would be Holly Township, Horizon Homes has had a sign there for probably a year.
And they're technically in violation.
Right, I'm just saying, now, does that, does that bother me? No, I, do I want to see homes sold in my subdivision? Of course. So it's, you know, but I can see, I can see where in that situation they would take advantage of that, because it's marketing.
Some of those are permitted, you know, Karen just received one for the Riverside development.
That's what I'm at.
So, you know, sometimes they are permitted, then that goes based on their location and whatnot, it's where you're seeing, where you're seeing them.
Yeah, and it's not big, it's not.
No, and it makes, it makes sense if somebody's gonna, a developer's gonna come in, we should let them have a decent sign up so that they can sell the many lots. Now, it's when they start piling four or five signs up, that's like you see on Grange Hall, that I get a little bit itchy.
Billboard.
What is it, Holly, what do you call those, Taylor Park, all those signs?
Oh, Holly's.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a whole other thing, the banners that they've got up right now.
So we're gonna change that to six?
I think so, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, I know, six. I like consistency.
Call the sales just to get some instruction.
Someone's quitting to look at it. He'd only count it once. Alright, so next would be freestanding signs, so we're starting to get into your permanent signs now. And you probably hopefully remember this graphic from last time, it's been updated to show what is current, currently allowed, right, in the zoning ordinance, for sign ordinance. So, you know, the way how, how it reads for, for these signs, right, pylon or pole-mounted freestanding signs shall be prohibited. In instances where the applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning commission or zoning administrator's act blah, blah, blah. That, that visibility would be seriously impacted by ground or monument sign, a pylon sign may be permitted. Ooh, right, so.
So it may be permitted?
Yeah, so I, I should update that graphic to cross out prohibited to have it allowed as.
Pylon sign was not prohibited.
Correct, it would be allowed with planning commission or zoning administrator approval.
The center, the center pole.
Right.
Right.
You're just gonna draw an arrow up.
And so, you know, we're not proposing any changes to the sign size.
What is the reasoning behind prohibiting the two? I don't understand why they're worse than the other ones. When I've gone through signs, I know people just don't seem to like the center pole signs, mainly they're older signs now, the ones that are up. But I don't understand that the ground sign and the base mounted block more view in some cases by far of other properties than the pole signs or the, you know, kind of in the bottom line of it. So I, I just miss what the reasoning is, not allowing those in the same way with permits.
I would agree. I always get asked that question, I don't know why.
So I think what happened was sometime during the late nineties, there was just this trend.
Yeah, well, that's why, almost all the new ones are the ground sign type, but to me, they block more visibility of the properties nearby than the other types of signs.
Some people decided that it was more visually, you know, appealing to them, and then the. Some people decided that it was more visually, you know, appealing to them, and then the next community went to update their sign ordinance and they looked at what this community was doing. So they copied it, and the next community copied them.
And the center pole signs. The only thing I give a center pole signs is, we're used to like Dart Highway and stuff where the old signs have been up there for years and they just don't look very good. But they're less impeding to the view than most of the signs.
View, yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Getting in and out of the properties and seeing the next commercial properties, so.
The argument was the monument signs, those ground signs looked better. That was the argument by the, all the different municipalities. It just became the, it became the norm.
It became the norm, wasn't too bad. I think one of the schools on Academy is in violation. Don't they have a two-post sign with a banner in front of their, in front of the school? Not, not the Academy High School, but the.
Adelphi.
Yeah, they've got a two-post sign with a banner, and the banner's not always upright.
I had a question, when you did the rewording for the pylon sign, is that because you see this in other places? Cause I'm not a real big, the pylon one, I.
So, I, I didn't reword, that's actually in the ordinance right now.
That's, that's what's, that's what's in the ordinance right now.
I did a question last month, is what's the difference between two? One is just humping down, the other one's across. It's basically the same.
Well, I, I guess when allowing the planning commission zoning, that gives her, because it's not necessarily the pylon, the style itself, it's the heights that I said, you know, and the width, yeah, that's where I got the issue.
You know, Genesis signs are pretty intimidating.
Yeah, and they're, yeah.
Those are pylon signs. Yeah, all of this is really aesthetics. What, how do you feel as being in charge of the aesthetics of the community?
You're still gonna have to get approvals. They have to be, to me, attractive signs to begin with, so to me, I don't understand why we're prohibiting these styles. If they're gonna do it and do a nice job, why make it harder for them to?
Why can't they all be allowed with the approval of the planning?
That's what I would go by.
Planning or zoning.
The only reason, the only thing that would concern me with that, and I don't see a reason not to allow these, these two either, just when you start talking about aesthetics. And I agree with you, but it's subjective. I mean, you might think a certain sign is beautiful and I may say it looks, you know, awful. And then we're hanging somebody in the balance of what we consider to be artistically pleasing. That's the one slippery slope.
But not one of us, it's the commission.
Well, sure, but.
Well, I guess with the pylon, when I'm looking at that, uh, to me, they're ugly period. But I guess heaviness allowed, we could, you know, could say, fine, you want it, but it's gotta be positioned, so it's not impeding sight or stuff like that.
Which we kind of begin with.
That, I, that's where I think kind of having a planning commission or the zoning, you know, look it over is, it's like, we might not like it, but at least we can have some say in where it's gonna be placed, you know, more so, you know.
Yeah, I don't see a downside to at least allowing an applicant to apply for any of these.
Does it cost money for them to apply?
There is a permit application.
Okay, but would there be additional, so if I wanted to do a ground side, ground sign, I'd have to, I would have to apply for a permit?
Correct.
Okay, does it cost additional money if I want to do the center pole sign?
We need addition?
Cause it requires more approval, right?
Uh, so. You know, I think, the, the way how the ordinance is, is written right now, the zoning administrator does have the ability to approve that type of sign.
Zoning administrator approval, that was.
Right, so, in that situation, no, right, because it's part of the sign permit app, your general permit application. You know, I, I think the, I don't know, I, I mean, how many, how, how many sign permits do you guys get for like freestanding actual permanent signs?
They usually come with a site plan because you're doing a commercial development or a residential development that is going to require signage. So usually it's right in there, so you're mostly seeing everything.
It's not a hardship, it's not like we're, you know.
Anyhow, right.
Right, and, and, and that gets us back to the philosophy we've been trying to move forward with some of these amendments, is think about the full development of your site.
Right.
Let's do it all at once and let's have the flexibility.
We're not talking about you, we're not talking about a residential person walking up and saying, I wanna put a monument sign, now you're gonna charge me all this money to have that done, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they apply for a double inside post-ground sign, and for some reason we decline it, and they have to come back before us, saying, we're not gonna charge them an additional?
Well, no, if they're gonna appeal, right, you're gonna, there's only one of appeals. That would be.
Well, but I mean, if then if they compromise, decide to come back and compromise and say, okay, we'll do a pylon sign, are we gonna charge them for another permit application?
I don't have that answer.
I think, I think you're gonna take it on a case-by-case basis and what the process is.
Okay.
Right, if they are doing it as part of the site plan.
Right.
No, right, cause they're already gonna be in front of you guys.
Right.
Right.
Right, if they are trying to come in and get approval from you, a standalone request, where you need to do a special meeting with, not a special, but a specific meeting with the planning commission, that's a different type of, of request.
Okay.
So a business wanting a new sign, a new way of doing it would be different from a developer coming in? Developers, the developer's already dealing with us, so there's not, the give and take isn't gonna cost them anymore, whereas, you know.
Somebody wanting to change a sign.
Just change the sign.
But then you.
But again, right, you know, they have the, so the zoning administrator has the ability to look at the sign, take into consideration the site constraints. If, if the determination is, it's not necessary for whatever reason, the location's not right, or, you know, it's not appropriate for the location. They have the ability to appeal that, that decision, go in front of the zoning board of appeals, right? There is going to be costs associated with that. But there would be, you know, that's just, unfortunately, that's the way how the process is.
Right.
Right, you know.
Well, unless we allow it here.
Yeah, unless we allow them to.
Unless.
Unless you allow everything and say, that's it.
So the times it would be as if it was a new sign or a re, like I have a ground sign and now I wanna have a post and panel ground sign. That is, that would be when the zoning administrator could approve it.
Correct.
And then if the zoning administrator doesn't approve it, then I would take it to the zoning board of appeals.
So, when it says allowed with planning commission or zoning administrator approval, what would be the circumstances where it would go to one or the other?
Site plan.
Okay.
So an existing business going for, thing would just go to these.
Most likely the zoning administrator.
Administrator, okay.
Currently the way, if these are prohibited, you still couldn't do those kinds of signs, right?
At all.
Right.
Right, the way it's currently written, we couldn't at all.
I'd like to change the verbiage to all, to, to the other ones to the same thing as the pylon and center pole sign. I'd like there to be a check and balance.
So, I, I think that gets back to Glenn's, you know, concern though. Oh, you know, these double posts that, that are short, it, what's wrong with that from a character standpoint?
Oh, nothing.
I mean, why?
And so, if, if there isn't an issue with that, allow those, but then if they want to go, if, if there's a height issue, then that type of construction needs some additional approval.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Don't all signs have to go, anytime there's a change in sign, don't they, doesn't somebody have to, don't they, somebody, so somebody has to approve any of these, whether they're allowed or not. So that's why I'm saying, just put the allowed with planning commission or zoning administrator approval on all of it.
But so, so the way how the ordinance reads right now, is that if you want to do a pole sign, that is not a right that you have. You, you're essentially having, it's, it's written so that you have a, a variance alternative process, right? So you don't have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals because your sign is gonna be too tall, right, so it's a pylon or a pole sign, because of the topography or the setback, you know, et cetera, right, so it, it provides that flexibility. Um, you know, just saying these double post signs aren't allowed because, you know, the, the question becomes why?
Right.
Right, because if they're, they're gonna meet the height restriction, the location restriction that you would put on a monument sign in and of itself, you know, is the construction of having it just on two poles so outside of the character of, of Holly that you do not want to allow it unless there is some sort of, you know, outstanding reason, you know, that.
We could talk about, I guess, maybe about what those poles are made out of. Do we want to make them wood, metal?
That's a part of the approval.
Yeah, do we care if they're shiny gold, uh?
On our, your content.
Before outside corner, the ground signs are all the same, or something.
And what I look at is where, cause I have a ground sign, I guess a village had a ground sign in the village. If I put something, either shrubs or plants, it covers up part of the bottom of the sign. These other signs, if you put shrub or something around, um, it's still basically the same sign, only it's more attractive to me. And so I don't understand why we'd want to prohibit them.
Well, no, I think, so the question is, what language do we, cause again, even, no matter, if we say we will allow somebody to apply for any of these, they still, somebody still has to approve it.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying, I think, just adding this allowed with planning zoning approval language to all of them.
But you're adding another step.
But that step is, that step is taken.
So, so I, I.
The step is already taken.
So I, I, I think we're, so for the pole signs and pylon signs, the ordinance is written right now, the, it per, it puts, how do I say this? The, the zoning administrator has additional leeway? I, I don't think that's right. If someone comes in and has their, their five-foot tall sign. I don't like what it looks like, well, that's tough on me, right? You would meet the ordinance restrictions, you're allowed your sign. If you want to do it seven feet tall.
Right.
Now, I get my say.
I, I agree with you. It's the two that the height and the, with the others, they're basically what they are. The administrator could deal and say, okay, it's in the right spot, you met all the other requirements. So my thought would be, keep the two, the pylon and the center pole one with the planning commission or the zoning or, you know, administrator. And the other ones, just put them down as the administrator.
Yeah, if you are meeting the height, the proper height, the proper location, your proper depth, then you can do it.
Right, you have to make sure.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's.
You know, that way is, you're not clogging us up with a lot of, you know.
You take, you take the, you know, any personal bias out of the, the review.
Right, right.
You know, it's the permitted use versus special land use. That's really what, what we're talking about, right?
Right, right. Yeah.
These, these lower heightened signs are your permitted use, your special land use are your taller signs.
Now, are you guys okay, do you guys, assuming we're gonna go this route, do we want to talk about the type of poles that are being used? Like, just as an example, the village, with all the lighting that, that is allowed, if you'll notice now with any new lighting that's put in, there's a certain type and a certain color. There's a couple different kinds, but there's a certain type that they're, they're basically requiring to go in. Kind of those antique-looking poles, you can't just, you can't just put whatever kind of lighting pole you want. And even with signage, they've got some restrictions as to what the look and feel is. I said, if you guys don't think it's gonna be a problem, I.
The biggest thing with signage I have now is the lighting itself. If you go to Genesis at certain times at night, those pylon signs they have that are more directional inside, those lights are really bright and they really don't, you know, they do light the sign, but they also are very bright to.
I've got some concerns about sign lighting.
Yeah, they just about blind you if you look at it all the time, and I don't like that, but I, you know, I'm not saying we prohibit them, but that's the problem I have with some of the signs, is more the lighting than anything else.
Right. Right. When we get to lighted signs, I want to bring up some points about setbacks and.
I guess when you start talking, Tony, about poles and stuff and material and that on it, it's kind of hard for me to imagine, only because we don't have a downtown district.
Sure.
We don't have, we don't have a concentrated area where it's like, oh, crabs, you know, we got metal here or aluminum here.
Right.
You know, something that looks so, that I don't know right at this time, that would really be a factor for us to, you know, that's, you know.
I still don't see a difference in the ground sign and the bottom side of the ground sign.
Well, we're talking now about letting, letting go.
Letting it go.
Yeah, just letting the, uh, yeah.
I, I agree, I completely agree with you.
Later on that, just decide on that and make these two draws because I'm. Yeah, those are the same thing, let those, you know.
So I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna allow, one, one way or another, all six of these going forward. Yes?
Yes.
Amy say?
Yes, okay.
All right, we will make that work. All right, I think we can clear, clean up this language a little bit so that, you know, it gets you where you guys want to go.
Okay.
All right, so that's freestanding signs. Oh, the other big difference, right? Location. Cause right now you have a fifteen-foot setback. We're recommending that you remove that and that it's outside the right of what?
Yeah, that was on page nine.
Page nine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see, yeah, that's.
Right, because again, right, with the thing about the visual impact.
Right.
You know, the right of ways are minimum of, you know, sixty-six feet wide, you know, you imagine thirty-three feet from the sideline.
You almost have it up against a building.
Yeah, George and I, last night, ten o'clock at night, went onto Grange Hall Road and played Frogger. Um, cause we were looking at, um, we were looking, we went and measured, of course, I was the one who got to stand in the middle of the road.
I had done that ten hours earlier.
Yeah, we, uh, we measured bowling alley, we measured the cemetery, uh, the party store and the storage. And really, all of them were not in compliance with the fifteen feet.
Right.
But you look at those signs and there's nobody complaining about that, oh, they're too close to the road or they look bad or.
And if you moved them back further.
If you moved them back, they'd be into the bowling alley or into the cemetery.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Or, or you can't see them.
Right.
Right, because you have a maximum size and.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Now, one thing that we have, did not include in here, but I, I think needs to be included in the ordinance as a whole, is a clear vision, you know, in the zone.
Yes, right, right.
Right, so what this does is, you, you're essentially creating a triangle at, at your intersections, so that, you know, a car pulls up, and this is not just signs, this is for landscaping, et cetera. You can look, right, and you can see the incoming cars, and then we can reference that as part of this, the sign ordinance too.
So I'm gonna say, what, what did you change in here then?
So the, the signs themselves, right, the, the sizes and, and height are remaining the same.
Yep.
For the setback, right, so that would be, uh.
Out of the right of way.
Bullet point number three.
Okay, so that's what you wrote.
Cause right now it's a fifteen-foot setback, uh.
Yeah, you'd have to go an additional fifteen feet right now, and we're getting rid of that.
And so, but, so you have a front yard setback, but you're also gonna have your side yard setbacks, all right? So you're still gonna have to be setback from, from your side pro, from your neighbors, right, based on how, what do we have, how tall the sign is.
So you couldn't have the sign backward on the property line, you'd have to have it setback.
Right, so essentially it would be five feet off your side property line.
So when it falls down, it's not landing near your neighbor.
And, right.
Yeah, I mean, really, that's, that's what it is. And then, like I said, we're, we're gonna amend this language for the pylon pole, so it's clear. But, you know, so the, the size and height, we're, we're not really proposing any changes. I don't think that there's been really any complaints so much on that. Um, you know, one, one thing we have mentioned is that as part of the development process, you know, they will be able to present those signs to you. So if they do need a larger sign, you will have the ability to approve a larger sign as part of the site development. You know, again, right, we want everyone thinking about the full, you know, development of their property when they come in to see you guys and not do this piecemeal and, we'll worry about that later. We, no, we want you to worry about it now. So it's advantageous for them to do that, right, cause they can get it done in one meeting as opposed to, you know, zoning board or, you know, multiple planning commission, just get it done in one. All right, so the next is wall signs. And I don't think, uh, we were proposing any changes to the wall signs.
Again, why are the two types prohibited? What, what is the basis behind those, I guess?
So, again, right, it's aesthetics, you know, I, I think, I, I don't know, you know, you.
And decommissioning can, it, taking it down can cause.
But the mansard roof sign is the standard in the commercial strip center.
Yeah, I would say that would be the one of the most visible.
You've got ten stores in a row, that's the only place you have to sign.
Strip malls, that would be the normal, or more than.
I think that's.
How do we prohibit that?
I, I don't necessarily think on the, I don't know.
Roofline, I might be able to understand, but I just wonder why, you know, again, when you're a business, you're trying to get your name out there some way, and sometimes that might be the best place to do it that's completely out of, you know, where it's not gonna obstruct traffic or anything like that.
Well, the wall signs are accepted.
And I can imagine if you had a business right along the expressway someplace, that would, might be the best possible way you'd have for a sign, it would be of true speed. And what they know. I'm always amazed when I go by businesses along the expressway, they don't have a name on their business, so it's like that.
The one up on the roof.
Ten names on it.
Well, then you can't find any, you'll see anything.
The one on the, up on the roof, I mean, that's, I don't, personally don't have an issue. I'm pretty much with the, uh, the rooftop one, I'm kind of with the aesthetics, that's the one. Because my thought is on something like that, if you had, way to show them like on here, why wouldn't you make that a wall sign? You know, you can make that a wall sign now below and you don't have that height up there.
And rooftop signs can blow over, I mean, they can go, they can cause.
It's, it's a more urban design.
Yeah, that's, right.
But that would be the one that easiest to maintain, that one mansard roof to change anything out or?
No, we were talking about the bottom one.
Yeah, I'm saying, but, say on the roof, you can stand right there and repair the sign of that, or the other ones, you'd have a hard time doing any maintenance to them. Not that, that's a huge issue, but.
And you can see it from afar at the distance.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't think that's gonna appeal to very many businesses, but to me, let them decide what's gonna work and, especially, this isn't really gonna obstruct traffic or anything. That's, all the other ones, there's those issues with obstructing the neighborhood property and things like that. This one is pretty, I don't think you're gonna have anybody that applies for it, but it just, I don't understand why we prohibit it either.
And the window signs, I mean, is that included, the open sign?
Well, I can think of an example for the window for, um.
Well, I can think of an example for the window for, um, for my Zumba class. I have a large, very large, um, Zumba sign that's in there. And it's because the plaza faces Saginaw when you're coming down it, so when you're coming down it, you'll actually see that, so.
Disability and.
Visibility and and marketing for that, so.
Sign is there to reach somebody and say.
This is where it is, exactly. It's like, this is where it is, so I.
I just don't see hardly any roof signs being done, but I just don't know why we're prohibiting it either, if something, the business feels that's a good place for it.
Do you have a window sign?
And then the roof, I would agree, the strip mall situation, I mean, the one over on Fish Lake and Grand Chaw, I would think would have some of these, so.
A lot of communities have a percentage of the window that can be covered.
Right.
Right? And the reason for that is safety, right? And the thought was, you know, your officers back in the day when they did their rounds and walked, you know, walked downtown, they could peek in the window and see what was going on. Um, so that may be, uh, inappropriate, you know, for for window signage.
Then my question would be, are we also counting how many windows? Cause another example for SNAP is it covers one whole window, but there's another three windows next to it that are open. So at that point, are we going to take into consideration how many windows there are that are open? Is it the total window space or is it one window?
Windows supply cost you do down. Business, use the total windows.
So so right now, you guys are allowed to have window signs, provided the signs do not exceed more than ten percent of the window area in which they are displayed.
So that's one win- that's a window it's in, right?
But there's different reasons for window signs, partly mainly for your business, but sometimes you're blocking, you don't wanna see people exercising, so you're actually blocking vision in there, or you're blocking so the sunlight doesn't come in certain times of day, cause that can be blinding and, and, you know, there's other reasons and why not be a sign than just black?
Black, yeah.
Cause I look at the writing, when they built that, Village made them do the arched windows and all that, but what did they do? They just put black over the windows, so it didn't really add to it. If you drive by, there's, you don't see in the windows, they have the arched windows, but they're really not truly windows, there was.
The the alternative of that is, you took the liquor store, right, where essentially the whole window is just an advertisement.
Advertising, right.
You know, sales or whatever they have going on. You know, that seems to be the type of sign that communities don't wanna see.
And that's what I would actually implore you to think of is Seven Lakes Party Store.
Their whole property is a billboard.
So it's all of their windows, it's all of their frontage, it's attached to their pylon sign, it's attached to a post in the, you know, right outside of the public right of way. So you have multiple different signs, but on a large scale.
And they have a Mansard sign, right?
And I'm, and I was gonna say, and that building is a Mansard sign, so you have that one, Angie and Diane's Juice Shop right now. So, and I believe that because that structure already exists, that might be something that's grandfathered, um.
We're talking about clutter too, I mean, clutter.
Yeah.
And that's what I would say is kinda think of those extremes.
And advertising in the.
As far as when you're going car.
White cells, you can't cover the whole page of print, you gotta give it some space.
This isn't, this isn't NASCAR.
You can't sell if you got a hundred signs out there, nobody's gonna focus on any of them.
Right.
So they're ineffective, but that's not the reason rule against them, it's.
No, but it is, but and they're not very attractive.
Yeah, that's, that's also, you know, kind of subjective too.
I would say. Yeah, I would say that if we do the total window area, all of the windows.
That's how Hazel Park is.
Then I would be, I see what you're saying and I can definitely understand that, but.
Think of most of the gas stations, the party stores around here, and they're all just covered signs.
Is that what you're wanting to allow or is that what you're wanting to restrict?
Restrict, yeah.
So right now you have.
That would be by a percentage.
Have window signs are allowed if they do not exceed more than ten percent of the window. But that's one window. That's already in signs permitted in all districts.
And that basically would, in theory, cover your open and closing sign.
And it also specifically lists open and closing signs.
What if you, so what would you say, increase the percentage and save for the overall surface?
Overall window area.
Cause then if you said ten percent of the overall area, then that would allow someone to put something up, but you couldn't plaster your whole thing, you know, if you said ten percent of your total window thing, that should give most businesses a reasonable amount of you know, coverage without restricting them too much.
Right, and saying again, nobody's gonna go out there with a tape measure and measure ten percent versus eleven percent.
But like what she was pointing out, yeah, there, it's like you can, I don't need to go and measure, I can see, you know.
Say, well, in the, but in, in that case, you know, if now you're the, you're the business owner, now think of that as the business owner's perspective. Which I know Glenn likes to make sure that is acknowledged, is that they're gonna try to rebuke, okay, well now you're if you're gonna tell me it's ten percent for window, then I, you gotta show me what ten percent for window is. So there's gonna be times where administratively, you're gonna have to enforce that. I understand that, you know, ten versus twelve is not gonna be a deal breaker. However, when you're talking about percentages per window, per window surface area in total.
Gets complicated.
Yeah, and then enforcement becomes active or only by complaint, and that's really not the way it's supposed to be.
No, right, especially, I would say in your commercial districts.
You know.
That's one of the best.
That's in the business, yeah, so.
Well, except again, we are trying, we are trying to protect the, the look and feel of our township.
Character.
And the character of our township, so.
The outside signs, to me, the window signs are, they're, cause if you do any kind of window coverings on them, I'm like, we're not restricting those, are we? And that's part of what signs are, is potential window coverings too.
That's.
We're not saying they can only have green shades and they can only have half down and half today or something. It gets to kind of what you get inside the business, and that's what windows, and I just remember grocery stores always used to have weekly specials. You actually look for that, they put them on the windows to entice you in, partly.
I guess, I guess another way of looking at it, I guess I could think of one in the village, would be the marathon station, the one at, uh, Greenshaw, Saginaw. Now, their windows are covered, but yet they don't have any banners or anything on the outside.
And I don't think it's.
Yeah, you know, it does not, and I'll readily admit, I had to think about it a second, it doesn't really stick out. I mean, I get, you know, case, so now you're making an argument up for both sides here.
Yeah, that's kinda where I am, and it's, it's like I can understand. I mean, because the, with the liquor store type situation, are any, that type of business, I mean, your vendors are gonna come and give you the sign, they'll put the sign up for you and take it down and track how long it's up for. Um, so I can, I can understand the concern with that. But then it becomes, is that not expected, but kind of accepted? Would be more of a, you expect to see that when you go to that type of establishment. Um, you know, but I'm kinda like, with that, I could go both sides with it.
And you have to unilaterally enforce, you can't enforce based upon.
Exactly.
The content, so.
Right, so now it's.
Clutter things makes more sense than, yeah.
Yeah.
So I normally don't go this route, but do you have complaints about window signs?
I have complaints about Seven Lakes Party Store.
But is it the window signs or is it the outside, exterior signs more?
It's the signs that are on the windows on the exterior.
The entire body of.
It's so busy, yeah, it's so busy.
Can we get some examples, you mentioned Hazel Park. Can we get some examples of how other communities might address, uh, if you, I mean, I don't know if you've got.
Yeah, sure, um, I I think the the question, I I'll be honest, I don't know where Hazel Park is, but, um.
Eight mile near, right on the Detroit border, basically.
See, I still don't know where it is.
Well, no, so, so I, I, so, I thought for some reason it was like around here.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
Which is why, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So I, I can give you examples, right? But you don't need an exam, uh, you know, Grand Rapids example, right? You you want, you know, what's the village doing, what's Rose doing, what's Groveland doing, or not, I, maybe not.
Just because somebody next door does it doesn't mean it's right.
But you're thinking the same, a comparable area.
Right, you know, Grand Blank, right, they, they have, I think, twenty-five percent and it's, you know, when I was there, it was a struggle every day. Right? Because, you know, they wanted to pick and choose who you enforced it against. And and you, you know, you can't do that, um.
I mean, like, how does it work for the village? Cause like I just said, with the marathon station, it's one like, yeah, I can see him there, but now that I think about it, it's not something that I considered clutterily, but when I go to Seven Lakes, it's definitely, yeah, that catches my eye.
I'm just thinking of a business that has big, big windows, they need something to cover it up, either they're gonna put shades in or, like, I guess you could do shades, but why not something that promotes the business, it's gonna be visible, why not allow them? Cause they gotta cover it up somewhere.
Shopping center.
Yeah.
In the village, does, uh, what, does anybody know what their requirements is on their windows? Cause that, when I was, when I was talking about Hazel Park, I knew Family Dour, we were required to take them down after so long. We could only put them up around the so percentage of the windows and then we, you know, and it was the same thing, you had to be able to see inside the store, you know, safety issue type thing and that, um, but I'm like, I can't picture that I've ever seen anything up at there.
I don't, I don't remember. I know the party store, the vil- the, party store in the village has got all kinds of sign clutter. Um, you guys, you know, the one right next to downtown, yeah, between the inflatables and the.
Well, the thing is, does the business owner, again, like Lloyd had pointed out before, is it something that the business owner is even thinking of? Cause I can tell you, when I put up my Zumba sign, I was not at all thinking about whether or not I was gonna be breaking some type of sign. Sign ordinance, because it's, I put it up on the inside of my, of my establishment. Now, the party store, I do know that they discuss it, cause when I worked there, but, so it's, you know.
They put stuff on the outside.
They put stuff on the outside, but again, and it's, it's the vendors as well in that type of situation.
Township, do you have business licenses?
No.
Cause that would be an easy one to say.
Well, you know, business license is a whole nother issue, right? But I, you know, my, where I was thinking with that, you know, you could have like a welcome to Holly one sheet, you know. With certain regulations that that are important to a business, right, that are also important to to the township. You know, but, you know, you would be able to put together pretty easily, you know, with, you know, temporary.
See, I go back to, you know, if a sign is something that's gonna promote safety, so if it's being able to see in the windows, I can understand there's something safety to that, but when it comes to just taking away the owner's right to advertise, I have a hard time with that. And I know cluttered signs, to me, you lose, because once you get a whole bunch of signs, you can't see any of them. But that's their choice and that's their loss, not, you know, I I just have a problem with certain.
But it does, it, on the other hand, and I do, I understand what you're saying, but it does then go back to impacting the character of the community. And that's where we've got, that's part of our job is to to safeguard that.
And they are currently allowed, they're just only allowed ten percent. So I would say that while they are permitted, maybe you're wanting to change the actual percentage.
Yeah, that just seems like a real low amount, you know, it's like, you know.
How many would, how much would you want to allow?
Right, right.
Well, then my question would be, okay, so we, we keep going back to the party store and the cluttered look, what makes it look cluttered? Is it just the window signs or is it the window signs and the banners and it being on the pole? Is it, is it? Yeah, now it's, now it's the whole, the whole package of it that makes it a problem.
Way to consider it.
Windows and nothing in the parking lot, that could have a whole different perspective of, you know.
You know, you can say theoretically that you have X amount of square footage for the face of the building, right? They wanted a wall sign, or they wanted a window signs.
Can only cover so much of your.
So you're saying a percentage of the, of the face, and whether if they wanna do several small.
Not just windows.
Right, as long as it's the whole front of the building.
On the building.
You are allowed, you know, just a number, fifty square feet.
Use it however you want.
Tell me what, how that, how the best, you know.
Now, that might be, that, I like that, that's, that way you're not limiting anything. You know, and then it's just make, the only thing they, it's, they gotta decide where they wanna put it.
Right.
It's that.
And that doesn't stop them from putting two or three signs up as long as it doesn't cover more than.
Right.
I like that.
AC, you look like you're in deep thought.
No, no. Do many communities not regulate at all for window coverage?
So, how about this, right? It's in the ordinance.
Well, it's in ours, yeah, but it's.
Most communities have it in in the zoning ordinance.
Now, do they enforce it?
No, I, I, they don't.
The tape measure, how many times are you gonna get out with the tape measure?
It's, you know, it gets back to the enforcement issue, they'll enforce it when it's in.
Egregious.
Yeah.
I like the idea of a percentage of the building attached to the building, now that, that does, cause that way, that's one, it's like, guy, guy, that's more than fifty percent of your building, you know, or whatever, you know, that's, that's, that's when I think enforcement wise, you're looking at it, and it's like, that's a heck of a lot easier than have we had twenty percent or, you know, eighteen percent?
For here.
Right, right.
Exactly, well, I've got this much space right on that sign, so.
Damn the chip guy, he put a sign up and took up, you know, twenty percent of, you know.
I'll put some language here for you guys to to look at, we can at least discuss it.
Amy, from an enforcement standpoint?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree, they're, they are allowed, so you're just gonna go based upon percentage of what's there. And I do agree that when you're looking at a face of a building, I mean, you're gonna obviously have your main sign and then allowing for others is definitely reasonable.
So what about the Seven Lakes Party Store? Does that get to be grandfathered in? Have they been doing that forever?
That, that's, that's, I'm working on that project and because you want to be ex- explicit and deliver your message very distinctly to where it's understood, and I know that I'm saying, like, I Mike and I just had a discussion days ago about the signs at Riverside. And now because of the way that you can only enforce on size, shape, construction and placement, location. I have to present the information a lot differently now. You know, so now it's based upon public right of way, it's based upon that it's now considered a freestanding sign because we can't go based upon real estate signs, and then it's square footage and where you put it, and then whether it's permitted and whatnot like that, so. As far as Seven Lakes goes, they are, you know, there's certain signs that have been there for a long time. When you're taking signs on and off of that existing structure, when you've now put a post and you didn't meet setbacks and now things are adhered to the post that seem to be temporary, but the post is permanent. And then, so there's a lot that goes into, that's a big project that I'm not quite done with.
And so, you know, when you consider grandfathered in, just because they have something involved, doesn't mean that they're grandfathered in. If they were never legal to begin with, you you don't just magically, you know, be given.
Grandfathers where you change the rules and, you know.
Well, when you take a sign down, now you're putting it back in, all grandfather laws are out, are out the door from, so many perspectives, so.
You know, there's language in there for, you know, if you're replacing X amount of cost and, you know.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's kind of, not to hit on a service subject, it's kinda like with the Renaissance Festival and the Woodlands Act, you're going on. Seven Lakes is kinda one of those, like, that pilot got our minds thinking about it, but it's not something we can really do anything that's more kind of Amy's end of it, you know, we can't, we can't really do anything with the ordinance per se to go after it for.
Bones that allow me to enforce, I just have to make sure from, you know, the representing, representing the township standpoint that I'm being effective in my message and being correct in my message, because I want to unilaterally enforce. Whether it's signs or plate or whatnot, you want to make sure that you're setting a standard for everyone.
Renaissance Festival, I want my own sign on I-75 that says exit for Mitchell Farm. How would they do that?
That's Groveland Township issue.
You like that dance, right?
All right, well.
On expressway.
So, all right, we gotta go back to this though, cause we've, we've covered the one, the window sign. What do we, what do you guys wanna do about the roof signs and the other thing?
I think I, the sign on the roof, I mean, I think we have examples of that currently.
Do we?
Where?
At Fish Lake and the, and that.
You're talking Mansard probably.
No, I'm talking about.
No, not the roof, I'm talking about the Mansard.
No, yeah, okay.
I mean, we definitely have that, so I mean, and is it a problem?
No, I don't, I don't see that.
I, I would not want the roof, the traditional rooftop signs, I think those, those are, they're hard to, they're hard to take down. They, they do blow over and cause damage, but as far as the, the Mansard sign, why not?
So I would say that the projecting sign for hard to take down and maintenance and things along those lines would be more cumbersome than the roof sign would be. I'm not for the roof sign personally, I'm not, I do not like them.
Those get, the projecting, the projecting signs going into concrete can be removed easier than going into.
I would, and.
Yeah.
And I don't see those necessarily being as popular either, I don't see that, you know, I don't see that as being one. I don't, the roof sign, I just, it's just the look.
I don't see it being happening, but I, I don't see why we're prohibiting it, but. I don't see it being happening, but I, I don't see why we're prohibiting it, but I'm not gonna reject too much of that ones.
Definitely, you know, the other thing to always keep in mind, you know, trends change, right? That's why we have all these regulations on, on monument signs, right? You know, someone may not be doing this type of sign now.
Right.
But, you know, some, some new, you know, fast food joint comes in, this is their model, oh, look, you know, I wanna copy them. You know, so if it's not a sign that you wanna see.
No, I'd say the roof sign would be the, one of those options where there's no space on your lot to put a decent sign. That would, might be the only place other than the face or something, and that's.
You know, you can al- always apply, well, there's two remedies, right? If it's part of their site plan, you guys can look at it. Or they can go in front of the zoning board of appeals.
They're still allowed to appeal.
Can we do the planning commission zoning administrator for the roof sign?
I, well, so.
Yeah, I would go for that actually. What is that?
You know, I, I'm hesitant to put that on the zoning administrator. And the reason is because it's a subjective, you know, reasoning.
So you don't want one person making that?
Right, you know, uh, cause if you get to that point, then, you know.
But if we're prohibiting it because of safety, but blowing up, to me, that is the reason why you have them approve it separately is to make sure.
I would imagine it's more an aesthetic, I was gonna say, cause that, safety goes, if we're gonna allow the projecting sign, in my opinion. Any rule that applies to this applies to the roof sign.
Yeah, I mean, as part of the application, you're gonna have to show how they're properly attaching, you know, me the manufacturers.
Yeah.
It, it is purely an aesthetic, you know, issue.
Yeah, I, that's me, it's not so much that I'm not.
You know, you're not gonna be looking at the. An argument you made for a pole sign, that there are specific circumstances that you can, you know, objectively say, alright, this makes sense. For, for this roof sign, I, I don't necessarily think that those specific situations would be there. So, the proper mechanism would be, you know, as part of the site plan, come in front of the planning commission. Or if it is an existing, you know, building, go the various.
I give up, alright.
But, but the mechanism is there, if someone is passionate about it, they do have the ability.
They do still can get.
And that's, cause it's like, I can think of Alex, Alex's, right, by seventy-five. I can see why they, I don't think they should, I'm just saying, as a business owner, I can see why you would wanna put a roof sign up there. So, but I, yeah, if they have the res- the means to do it, because I don't wanna see a bunch of roof signs, you know, all the way down. Yeah, and there we are, yeah, and I agree, I, I definitely, definitely agree.
As a general principle, I have no problem if a business comes before us with a legitimate reason for needing to do something. And they can demonstrate to us that these other options won't, don't make sense for them, and this is what makes sense, and here's why. I got, I got no problem hearing, hearing that, letting, allowing them to make a case before us. I think that's.
Would it be too much to ask for someone to go around and take some pictures of some signs in the township, to see what these really, we have all these.
Been working on an inventory, I can present that to you.
Something we could look at through a slide presentation, say this is.
As long as I don't have to go in the middle of the road again. Cars honking at us at ten o'clock and it was, yeah.
Well, I did that, I did it at eleven.
In the morning?
Yeah, so imagine my problems.
That might actually be worse.
It was. As he's standing there, here, take that out there. We can't just screw it across the ground, I mean. Construction, we have probably never been on.
He's trying to get rid of the zoning administrators.
Alright, so.
Page eleven.
Alright, next debate.
So, temporary event signs. So the language that you see in front of you is what's currently in the zoning ordinance, in the sign ordinance. The pictures on the left, right, I, I believe are classified as prohibited signs. I think that's what we discussed last time.
Same definitions, banners isn't definition, temporary.
The banners prohibited?
So, I, I think it was prohibited i- in general, under, unless, under specific conditions.
Because those flag banners are what Holly Hills has, I think four, four of them up right now.
The last paragraph says the temporary event sign, which would be the banner, I'm thinking, is allowed.
I think they're looking at what you see.
Yeah, they got two of them up now, I think.
We changed it today when I went through, I don't know what they were saying. Talk right in the road.
I think they were advertising for the craft show and I don't remember, it was something else, I don't remember. Yeah, that maybe, the bike, bike route.
Alright, so we did talk about like inflatables.
Right.
Something that you still wanna consider as part of these temporary event signs?
Alright, going back, say that gorillas out there, what makes that a temporary event sign? Why couldn't that be something, I sell gorilla glue all year round? What makes that temporary? I, I, what I'm thinking of temporary is you have a sale for two weeks or something like that, you have something. But what makes this difference, and if I just wanna put the gorilla sign out year round?
You can't have a big inflatable on gorilla. You can have them out there for thirty days.
That's gonna go again to the aesthetics that you envision.
But, but is that because it's a temporary event sign, or is it fallen or something else?
Well, they're not allowed right now, right?
I can tell you, when I, I've talked to some residents, and when I told them that we were considering allowing even temporarily gorillas and other inflatables. I got. I got look, yeah, I got, I got looks at me that rivaled when people get mad at me for telling, saying there's too many bars in the Village of Holly. I think the dirty looks I got for, for gorillas was worse. I think, I think they're okay, in, in limited, in limited scope.
Doesn't the balloon par have a small balloon that they blow up?
Yeah, they do.
It looks like this one?
Oh, that's right. Now I gotta go through the township and look at things more.
I guess I would wanna see some of these available, just because you do have promotions with businesses. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see any of them permanent, but then, you just brought up a point about the balloon and the balloon place, but.
But the thing, but they also, they don't, they have it for a limited time and that.
Do they have a permit for that?
No.
No, okay.
Signs is a very big project for code enforcer. And being that we're working on that, it's kind of, and knowing that this was coming, it's kind of, uh.
Don't stop.
I'm on my fact finding documentation miss- mission, so therein goes the sign inventory. And then going on a case by case basis, but then with, according to what's going to be is what I would like to begin to enforce.
And again, there's no.
Some that I am currently enforcing that regardless you're in the public right of way, MDOT's still gonna not let you put signs in the public right of way. So.
Which is probably one of your biggest.
It is right now, especially, so, and you'll notice if you drive around, especially Fish Lake and Grange Hall, I've cleaned up that area. You know, attempting to clean up the Riverside and Grange Hall area, um, so there's pockets. And especially those public right of way areas that I'm really paying attention to enforcing. In the meantime.
Sure.
And interesting, well, flag signs over here that are very popular right now are, are on there as well.
Yeah, those are the ones that are over at Holly, Holly Hills.
Yes, too many of them.
Too, well, that's, that was, I. I blew up Amy's phone about that.
And I think Marsh's Auto Sales had those too, when they were open.
Yeah, the village.
My, my subdivision last weekend had four on the. The piece of land, I can't think of what it's called, but when you're pulling into the, and that they had four of them. Right there, and that open house sign was right in the middle of it, now, did that bother me? No, because the next day when I went through, it was down, so it's, you know.
The ones at Holly Hills have been up for, what, about three weeks now? If not longer.
So what was your recommendation on the inflatable?
Just let them go.
Well, no, I. Right, you know. I think there is a planning philosophy. Where, you know, the thought is that, you know, these types of signs aren't necessarily appropriate for, you know, all types of communities. I think, you know, if you were to survey, the majority of planners, they would say this type of sign wouldn't necessarily be appropriate for, for Holly. For, you know, those rural in character. But it's really about what, what you guys think though, right? Because there's no one size fits all. I, you know, a- again, if you look at what you, you know, what surrounding communities are doing, I, I don't think that any of the surrounding communities allow the, the inflatables.
See him on Waterford, in Waterford, but that's a, that's a different world.
Yeah, that's a different world.
But the reasons these exist is they're very effective for businesses, attract attention.
Right.
Things that move, things that change, those are things that get a people's attention, and for business, a lot of businesses, that's what you're trying to do.
I don't have a problem with it being to businesses, but can we limit it to that? Can we narrow it to that, I mean, if someone decides they're gonna have a graduation party and they want a gorilla out there. Are we obliged if we're allowing?
You know, practical versus technical, right? Technical, yeah, sure, right, you would say, no. Practical, you know, if someone's doing it for graduation, it's gonna be up and down before.
Alright, so that, that would be an issue.
I don't have a, I don't, again, I'm gonna get arrows from the people I talk to, but I don't, do I like gorillas and those things? No, I personally, I think they're tacky and gross, but I would agree with Glenn that they, on a limited basis are. They, they do get your attention.
Right.
I, I drive by and wanna flip them off, other people drive by and wanna pull in, so.
They get my attention.
So.
Right now, if you really think about it, of all of these out there, the ones we're probably really talking about are probably really two locations in the township right at the moment. You know, and that's really.
Well, and that's the, you talk about.
You know, that's, that's kinda the hard part of trying to get a grasp, cause you're trying to picture, well, what business that's in the township would use a gorilla. You know, I mean, you know, that would be practical as part of it.
Marsh all those those.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, but that would be future, it's like, you know, I guess we gotta look down in the future on that, but, uh. Yeah, I'm with the fact that on a temporary basis, I don't have a problem with them using it for business, you know.
The ordinance reads, the, the height and size restrictions are based on your zoning district. So I think it's still limited to six feet tall.
Isn't very big for these.
Right, so, you know.
All these would be.
So, something like the gorilla may not necessarily be able to, you know, you're not gonna have King Kong, you know.
Right.
You know, you might have, you know, a little orangutan, but, um, you know. I know, I had, I had, I had a train of thought and, and laughed.
Well, let me ask you a question, six feet tall, is that the size of the object, or if they've got a way to elevate it using air, so it's six feet off the ground, and then?
Well, the fact that you're still gonna require a sign permit, it's still gonna have to go before the zoning administrator. So it's still gonna be ensured that it's a, you know, the, that meets all the recommendations that you've put in, in check here. And if you're limiting the days and you're already going for permitting, so there is going to, it's already gonna be on the radar. I mean, I know that you're, you're maybe in fear of it being there for a while, but if you're limiting and you're giving the ordinance and the ability to enforce. And you're already putting it in front of the zoning administrator, then it's already something that's.
On your radar.
On your radar.
Well, I wouldn't say in turn, but if it's only six feet.
Well, I was just gonna say.
If we're gonna allow it, let's allow it.
Well, that, what she's just saying is gonna be on, it's going to be in front, you're gonna know it's there. So, taking the size, making a lot and put larger ones in, I would think would be a humongous issue, because. You're saying they gotta come in front of you anyway, so that's true, you know.
I would have a couple of comments for you guys, you know, we can look, see what the industry standard is, right, if you go to Joe's inflatables, what's the standard size? So you have something.
Right.
How much money you have?
Right, the, the, the other thing, right, you know, as we always say, the zoning ordinance is a living, breathing document.
Yep.
These are temporary uses, right, so they are not gonna remain up.
Right.
If you find that, alright, you, this just is not right, this is ridiculous. You can amend the ordinance and then look and close that, that door, right? Because they're temporary, they're not gonna be grandfathered in, cause they can only be up for so many days.
So if we get invaded with gorillas, we can put a stop to it, if we want to.
Someone decides to bring in their King Kong along balloons, and we say, okay, we should have covered that.
Direction you, you wanna go to, you do have an out.
Right, yeah, that's.
We do need to keep in mind that the businesses need to advertise, they need, so they stay open, so they're here.
Right.
So, but we have to limit it somewhere, we can't just open it up to anything.
I don't, I.
But I think limiting the time.
Time, that, that's.
And having them bring it in and say, okay, I'm gonna be paying a fifteen foot gorilla. That's inflatable, and I'm gonna have it for three days, it's gonna start on this day, it's gonna come down on this day.
We should be doing this on a per business basis, but us, talking about the balloon place, already having a balloon up. How can we allow that? Because that's their business, to me, that makes sense, their sign, permanent sign basically would be a balloon or when they're open.
Right.
Is, are we, can we still allow that?
I'm not familiar, I, I'm not familiar with, with the balloon.
So we have an air balloon.
Hot air balloon, so you're over Holly quite a bit, yeah.
Right on great, huh?
Now the big.
I must have, I'm sure I've passed.
There's a mini golf, I don't think it's used anymore.
Bowling alley.
Right, yeah, it's right near the bowling alley.
There's a little barbecue place. Probably just too focused. Little barbecue, uh, trailer.
Is that not that balloon out for, isn't it more or less a sign?
There is a wall sign, but I think they've had an inflatable out there, it's not out there all the time.
And it's when, but the other side of that is, like, for them, you would think the big, I mean, I know everyone that I know. When they drive by and they're inflating the balloons is when it's really like, oh, that's so cool, you know, and that's where they really hit the draw.
So, so are we talking about like actual balloons? I know, but, but the sign that you're talking about.
No, it's a, it's just a large inflatable hot air balloon, very similar to what this, this looks like, they just don't have the banner on it, so. Yeah, just like the gorilla.
But what, I'm just saying, would they be able, with this temporary, they'd only be able to do it for a very short period of time, not for a long, that's the time they're open when they normally have that. I'm just wondering that we should be allowing the business of that.
Can they do, can, when they come in for the permit, can there be an exception for that type of situation?
That's what I was going for is, you know.
Or leave it up to the people.
Well, but there's a limit. Necessarily a content issue, but it is a, a favoritism.
Right, right.
Well, no, it's proving, they're saying, it's a hot air balloon, I am a hot air balloon facility. Therefore, I need to have this for this amount of time for this reason, it's proving.
Yeah.
The reason that they need it, it's not saying.
Or, would it be possible for you to get in touch with them and see how long they have?
That's exactly. No, 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 but I, the thought just occurred to me, what if they put that balloon out there on days when they're trying to show people this is where we're at?
Right.
You know, as compared to. Cause like Mike said, you probably reminded tons of times, just didn't realize it was there, you know. You know, so, yeah, that's, might be helpful to know why they use it, if it's directing people in, like, okay, we got people coming. We need to have them know where to pull off.
So on days when they're only distributing propane and not doing hot air ballooning activities, I don't see a need for an inflatable hot air balloon to be out there. I certainly can see a use for it when they're.
So then would you consider limiting the calendar year days, just like you considered in your temporary signs?
I think.
Then you could add that verbiage. Not to exceed so many in a calendar year.
I thought we had, don't we have?
Oh, that's, yeah.
Oh, the maximum.
Yeah, the max, yeah.
Placement, thirty days in a calendar year.
Yeah, I think, I thought we had that, or, no, we don't.
It's a different section of.
Temporary signs are fifteen days.
And you can't, oh, and you can't, uh, we're moving through to, no more than four permits. For a temporary event sign shall be issued for the same premises in every year, so, in that sense, they could have it up for sixty days.
Which, I doubt. Which, I doubt, I doubt very much they do, so, that's, yeah.
What's on that?
Sixty days.
What?
Yeah, well, it's on the whole season, and they have the.
They're open probably nine months out of the year.
But they could also apply for a variance at that point.
That's true.
That's where they.
Yeah. So then, as it's specific to that business, and if that, it's required as part of their business plan.
Right.
They can go before the ZBA and.
So we could still allow it.
And get a variance, yes, so it's, it can go case by case basis in front of the ZBA.
Right, yeah.
And that would be a variance you could justify.
Well, and that's more, we don't, don't want a gorilla at a car dealership, but I mean, if it's essential to the business, like, I don't wanna prohibit them using something that is effective for them, so.
I still come back to, we call it temporary event signs, but if I just have a gorilla in my business, it doesn't say anything on it, what makes that a temporary event, not just a gorilla that I have out for fun? What makes that a sign, I guess?
Well, if you don't have anything on it, that's.
A lot of, go ahead.
Okay, so now that brings, if we're gonna do inflatables, let's say that you have a business that does the inflatable toys, the inflatable jump houses, and things along those lines.
There was a car dealership. In Southfield, yeah, Southfield, uh, that had an elephant, and they, they fought back and forth over years over that elephant, the man actually had to take it back to his house, because I lived in Royal Oak, and he had to take it, why, they went through court on it. I do believe it was finally decided it was considered permanent because of the material which it was made out of, that it could be considered a sign, but when, if it was an inflatable, that was not considered permanent. And I don't know if that, if that, that was a while back, but to me, that would.
I'm just saying, what makes it a sign?
You know, that, to me, that's what kind of would be my thinking of it, if, you know, if you.
That's what you call it.
You know, a balloon, I consider, most people, I think, would think temporary.
So, I think we can, uh, do a little bit more research on, on these inflatables for you guys. It's different, right? And so, this is a very important discussion that you guys are having, right? Because the last thing you wanna do is, ah, let's just change it and then.
Oh, no, for sure, yeah, cause.
Right, so, we do have other things we can talk about tonight, so.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll look at that a little bit more.
Okay.
That's a big one.
Yeah, right, so, so now that, you know, we, we discussed the gorilla, and how about the monkey in our back, right? So electronic messaging signs.
This is electron.
So, I, you know, I think the keys to this, how, how often do you, does the message change, how does the message change? And brightness, right? And so, you know, we talked about the frequency of change, once per minute, right? Cause if someone wants to have a clock, well, once per minute, makes a lot of sense for that, right? But it's not changing so often that is the distraction for the drivers, right? You're not trying to continue the message.
Right.
Cause that's one of the biggest distractions that, that you see, right? They start off with message A, oh, what's next? And then you hit the car in front of you. Right? So, like Auburn Hills, right, they, they used to have, you know, messages like that, where, you know, it starts on one screen and.
You had to stop to wait to see all the screens.
Right, you know?
I do that with, with the fire station on Great Hill.
That's true, cause I do, and I'll be like, what's the temperature? It's like, you see the time, and it's like, okay, what's the temperature? Like, okay, there it is, so.
But luckily, I'm texting too, so I won't have to.
So many distractions.
So, so we're recommending a minute, which is reasonable.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyone who's doing this for legitimate purposes is not going to argue with a minute. The next is instantaneous change, right? So it just, message, next message, not dissolve.
Right.
You know, people running in with streamers, like, ooh, new message, it's, you know, message, next message, right? So, you can get your, you know, advertising out, you know, milk, alright, now cookies and, you know, whatever, but you, you're not distracting the, the drivers as it's going on. And then we talked about internal illumination, right, for, for how bright it can be, and I apologize, I forgot what the nits to, to actual foot candles is, I think it's on. One hundred, anyway, so this is based on the industry standard themselves, right? From the sign ordinance organization, they say, this is what you should be requiring for, for like brighter during the day, right? Because sun's out, right? With your phone, you go outside, you can't see it, so you gotta make it brighter, well, that same brightness at night right now, that's too bright, right? So you have the automatic dimmer, that's what they, they require, that's what their own industry says you should have, right? So that is essentially the standard for electronic messaging signs now, they have this dimmer switch, so it will get not as bright during the night. I'm not gonna say dark, right, because it is what it is. But the, as part of that, they have to provide the, the manufacturer information that proves that that's installed and operational. Other things you can consider that we didn't mention in here, you know, right now, you, you have that fifteen foot setback for monument signs, you know, we're, we are, we've talked about removing that, right? So you just have to be outside the right of way. For a sign like this, you know, it is easier to see further off the road, you know, that may be a consideration that, that you wanna consider, you know, maintain that fifteen feet, may not be, but that should be at least part of the discussion you guys have. But I, I think, you know, electronic messaging signs, that's, that's just the way the industry's going, right? It's, it's efficient, and when regulated properly, even under their own recommendations, right? You can get a good-looking sign that gets the message out and is, is, is not doored highway.
Right, right.
Right, you know, so. So we should have some discussion on that.
Well, I think we addressed the brightness, which I think is an issue, and hopefully that's the right amount, and, um, size basic. The thing I have trouble sometimes, but I don't see how we regulate, is if you have too small print, it's hard to see, and I think it's distracting, but I think that's still gonna be business by business thing, but I think you've already, the change, oh, the change, how often it changes, that is, can be distracting, or, you said, you want to see the next thing, and you're trying to wait until it comes up.
Yeah, you know, M dot has fifteen seconds, and I, I think that's too fast, right?
I would think fifteen.
Anything more than a minute, then, you're just, it, it's not.
No.
Yeah, who, who, why, right?
Right.
You know, because you're not gonna be affecting anyone, because they're not gonna be seeing it. And then you get back to your, I'm sorry.
What about size, and type, is it gonna be a base mount or a pole mount, or could be any of those things?
You know, that is, that is a good point, right? Because originally, right, we only talked about monument signs, or we just talked about allowing other types of signs.
This should fall in the same pattern, I would think. It just happens to be electronic and it changes copy.
Yeah, my biggest concern would be, I think we should enforce some, get them a little further off the road than just right on the edge of the easement, because I think they are designed to be seen from further distance, and even with a dimmer at night, they still can be bright. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the party store on the north end of town, cool looking sign, but it goes from a dark message to a bright message, and while that, I guess legally isn't considered flashing, it's flash. And if you're driving by, and that's a ground monument sign, or right at, basically at eye level, and it's close enough to the road, it could be a safety, it could, and since we can't regulate, I don't see how we could regulate and tell them, you can't go from a dark message to a brighter message. I just think we should encourage them to be a bit further off the road than just on the easement. Especially if we're gonna allow all these other, allow it to be on a, a pole or any of these other types that, that we're going.
Well, how far back, though? Then you run into, is it in the building?
Yeah, are you in the building?
Parking area or something like that.
Right. Well, but again, we're allowing them, we're allowing them now six, basically six choices of, of options for, for, so if it's a little further off, they can put it on a pole, if that's, you know.
So we're gonna, the most popular type of sign currently.
Yes.
Right.
Is the ground sign electronic, that's what's selling right now.
Right.
So we're talking about restricting that, or putting it back so far that it's not gonna be appealing?
Not so, not so, not, not so.
Tony's saying that, since we're gonna allow other options to signs, that we could be, you're saying we can move it back, because you'll have the brightness, so it'll take the place of, you know, the fact that it's further back, or.
They don't need to be right on top of the road.
Right, or at that point, would you restrict the size or percentage of the sign to be electronic? Like, for instance, Nakwa Station One, only a portion of their sign is electronic, same with curtains, or even Ron Dennis, a, a very small portion of his sign is electronic.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that brings a good point, right? Cause under the ordinance right now, and it's on the next page, changeable copy is limited to twenty percent of the sign.
Right.
So maybe the compromise, right, maintain that regulation at the, outside of the, the right of way, but if you wanna do the full sign, as changeable, as electronic message or changeable copy, would have to be, you know, the fifteen feet that, you know, is currently under the ordinance. You know, maybe that's the compromise between the two.
Yeah, I like that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That wouldn't work.
Hey, see, Lloyd?
Yeah.
See, this wasn't so hard.
We're talking more about the gorilla.
You know, what, what's nice about that, you know, because it is such an industry, you know, standard now, there, a lot of the groundwork been taken out of it.
Right.
So I, I would say you would keep the same for changeable copy then, right? So twenty percent?
Why twenty percent, though, I guess, is, how do you get this answer?
Yeah, it's the same answer for everything, right?
It's changeable, you know, the sign here, is it like seventy-five percent it's changeable?
Yep.
But he's got a good point, and I, I would say, especially because I know your business and the signage that you've used, along with Seven Lakes Vineyard, along with even the Farmstead, we have the literal just changeable copy sign.
Right.
That would be ninety-eight percent of the sign face. So that would be my question from a code enforcement.
I don't understand why the twenty percent, I don't.
So, a- again, right, it's just like, it's the answer to all of, all of it, it's aesthetics, right? Community Prime decided, we don't want to see those changeable copy letters on the entire sign. Community B, it's like, oh, well, we like what, you know, the Prime community does, we're gonna copy their ordinance and not think about it, and then C says, oh, well, these guys are both doing it, so it's gotta be the right way to go. And then, you know, twenty years later, twenty percent select the standard, you know.
I think if, if you're gonna allow a changeable sign, they should be able to put, maybe if we wanna restrict the size of the changeable sign, but I think if you're gonna have a changeable sign.
Should be the best, you're already of it.
There's no reason, I don't think, looking at Wimbish Elementary here, I don't think, if they only had two lines of, of type, or one line of type, it would look any be- better, just to see this white blank space underneath it, so.
But the other side of it is, is that if, what if somebody puts a, a, one of those letters, now expand that to the whole thing? And the only thing, you know, you have a word space, word space, word space, and now it's the whole, the whole thing, is that something that we wanna see as well? I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the other side of it is, is that, like, maybe seventy-five, seventy-five percent seems to be a good.
Yeah, the trailer signs.
Would that be considered this?
Yeah, I mean, so you'd have twenty-five percent as being permanent, which would give you the name of a business, school, whatever.
Right.
You know.
Is that possibly a typo? I mean, should it have been eighty percent?
No, well, like Mike just said, it's just a matter of.
Well, this is, I, and I just asked him to make that distinction, the, the changeable copy that I'm, I was referring to is actually a, is a temporary portable sign, different than a pre-standing permitted sign. So we're talking something similar to like a Holly Donut Shop sign, how much of that type of sign would you want to be changeable?
Including the permanent models.
The sign above it.
So right now, it's, for changeable copy signs in the ordinance, twenty percent is what's allowed.
That seems low, that.
I, again, I, so how do these start, right? That's the question. Quality of materials, when these first came out, were more like these temporary signs, right, where they aren't necessarily the best to look at all the time. You know, the standard materials now have, are better, right? So it's not necessarily as big of an issue as it was before. I, you know, again, right, you may wanna consider the same compromise you just did for electronic messaging, right, where twenty percent at the right of way, or fifteen feet back, hundred percent, um, provides that flexibility. Or, you know, you can consider, you know, fully changeable copy.
The only reason I, would, would be, what, wouldn't be changeable is like this, you'd want the business name to be permanent on there.
Right, right.
To me, I think you could, they're normally going to have it as permanent on there.
Well, you know, that's not necessarily true, if you go up on SAG and all, again, right, I, I used to work in Grand Blanc, so that's, you know, top of my mind. There is that, there is a development just, I don't know, maybe a mile north of, of Holly, on the right side. They have a change, they have two monument signs, one has the business name, the other one's just a changeable copy sign that's on, a monument sign, that does not have, you know, the plaza name.
Any kind of.
Right.
You know, it says massage, or whatever the salon, or whatever, you know, whatever advertising.
So, here's my question, now, especially now that we can't regulate content, I don't find, I mean, changeable signs, whatever, but when they start to get tacky, is when you drive by, and quite honestly, the Farmstead has this problem right now, you've got letters that have fallen off. Now, can you cite them for blight if they wanna say Armstead instead of Farmstead, because?
Well, but that, and that, again, like, that was, and that was my mistake, I misspoke, that is a temporary portable sign.
Okay.
So that's different than, that, that's in a different part of the ordinance than you're looking at right now.
Okay, but let's just, let's just say if it was a permanent sign, business puts it up, a year later, half the letters have fallen off, and it just looks.
So, you know, maybe we say that, it's because it's a permanent sign, there has to be an enclosure, right? So you have, so it would have the.
Plastic over it, yeah, or you have to keep the letters in place.
Alright, so you would have, you know, hinged, you know, to change it, you know, cause then you're regulating the construction of the sign and not, you know, the, the message of the sign itself.
Would that be, um, I don't, I would be up to them, but would that be adding a substantial cost to a sign like that?
It would be adding cost, I don't, I don't.
But then again, it's a one-shot deal, it's not like.
And what I would say is, in the middle of winter, and you go out to change that when it's frozen shut, you'd have to make it changeable, so there's issues with that. When my letters are frozen in my, I don't, can't change them.
Well, going back on the percentage, what is feeling on how much percentage wise, I mean.
Why limit it?
Maybe think away.
Again, who's gonna go out and measure a sign?
Well, but, that one, I can tell you, right, cause they're gonna be applying for a permit, so, yes, that one definitely, but, you know, may, maybe you flip it, right? Eighty percent and then twenty percent, where it has to have some sort of.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, that way you're like, yeah, eighty, yeah.
Well, what is the reason you're limiting it, again? Is it to make the business name always be on there? Is that the idea behind it, or is it just to limit?
Aesthetics, I would say aesthetics, mostly.
Aesthetics, and I don't think it's such a bad idea, so you don't have someone just, well, you know, just gonna advertise whatever on it, you know, it's like, okay, it's the business, you know, you're not going to have, you can't limit the, you can't say anything about the contents, but if you have the business name on there.
Yeah.
Doesn't that to some degree kind of, well, you know?
You're already gonna get a permit for your permanent business.
Your business, yeah, and you're going to be a little.
It's just for you to have changeable copy within that sign.
And just, just for clarification, looking at the picture, when you're talking about the percentage of the sign, are the, the bricks and all of that, is that, is that part of the sign, or are we?
It's part of the height, but it's not part of the sign.
No, it's not part of the sign, yeah.
And remember, they can always have a permitted temporary portable sign.
Sure.
Right, eighty percent sound.
Window signs.
I would think at least eighty percent.
Temporary yard signs.
The trailer, the trailer founded, changeable signs are, are good?
That's a temporary portable.
Temporary.
Cause our park commission has that out in Sorensen Park.
Right.
Sitting there with no message on it right now, just sitting there, not real attractive.
Right now.
So, I, I don't know off the top of my head if you guys have this restriction in here, but what some communities do, is that if you have a changeable copy sign, or electronic message sign, then you wouldn't be allowed to have that trailer sign, right? Because they're essentially doing the same purpose.
Right. I, I agree, I think that should be, well, just from the point, you could see someone saying, well, my sign isn't big enough, instead of investing the money and increasing the size of the sign, or getting a permission to do it, othering in a temper, I've seen that.
Well, like a farm, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you have, if you're a farm on a corner, um, you know, you have your permanent sign, and then if you're having some type. And then if you're having some type of event or some type of sale.
You got a fruit stand up.
A fruit stand or something along those lines, it would make sense to bring in additional marketing and advertising at that point. So I would just say be cautious on limiting in that manner, but just, it's just a way I could think that.
But then again, it would be permanent though.
It would be permanent, it would be temporary at that point.
Yeah, but it's still temporary, you're saying that.
You're saying.
They bring it in and they set it alongside the other sign and sit there and say, okay, this is now all my signage here.
So we've got two ways we can approach this, we can either do a percentage, or we could require the business name to be on the sign permanently.
Or development name, you know.
Yeah.
Isn't that still some kind of thing? Sure.
So we would say some sort of identification.
Yeah, some identification, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
That way they want to use the rest of the white part or the section of the.
Just thinking that's easier to enforce than percentage.
I would say that might be verbiage as far as the identification of the business for which.
Well, so, so I think you would leave it vague, some sort of identification, right, because then you're getting back to health, safety, welfare, how does the emergency services know where you're at? Right, so your identification, whether it's an address or.
Someone spurts out the name of the business and they're like, okay, where's that, you know, that doesn't mean anything to us.
You can require addresses, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I'm good with percentage, yeah, also, I mean, it's up to you guys, you're just throwing that out there.
I'm just hesitant to require that we, that they put the business name on. I would be more comfortable with a percentage. Because if they don't put the business name on it, can they then not have the sign?
That's where we could, we could, we could say that.
I would say why though? If we're trying to limit what, what goes on the sign, like us in parts, like space and the reading and things along those lines, what that says. I mean, I just don't think that we should require it to be, the name to be on the sign if it, if they have a sign.
My point is this sign could be just a blue strip across the top, and the rest all be changeable and meet the requirements, if you're going eighty percent or something like that.
Well, could, no, absolutely, it's.
Based upon percentage.
What's that?
So that's why it's stating and based and explicitly requiring percentage.
I think we should just take the percentage off and leave it as simple as possible. Again, businesses should make that decision based on their, you know, information, it's still just as cluttered to me whether it says Wimbis Elementary with the others or just all changeable letters.
AC?
Whatever said, welcome back to another wonderful year, and next year will be even more exciting, so please come back again next year.
It'll become ineffective, but it's not illegal.
Right.
But the percentage piece would prevent it.
Okay, so then if, now take the other side, if you have to read for a long period of time.
Oh yeah, that's distracting.
That's distracting.
Distraction.
But you're still going to have the same amount of words on there because the purple part of the sign could have words on it.
Very true as well.
And that's content.
Right.
And I can understand, you know, I've been places in other parts of the county where now with I know GPS, everybody knows where they're at, but we're without numbers on it, because I can see this doesn't have a number. That's the thing that I, to me, is more important than anything, it doesn't have a street or a, a street number on here to see where.
Well, that's why when I said business name, but an address would make sense.
Yeah, an address, that would be, yeah, that would, yeah, that would work, because I guess you could argue the fact that if it's a business sign, they're going to have something indicating it's a business. So I guess, you know, I could concede that and say, the address would be the appropriate.
I think almost, probably almost everybody's going to do it, is going to do something like this with their name on it.
Right, right.
Why do you have to tell them it has to be eighty percent?
Right.
Because we have to go out and measure it and figure out whether they met the requirements. I like to keep these things simple or, you know, make it easier to enforce too, so you don't have to go out and.
Well, but, you know, in those specific situations, right, they are applying a permit, right, so part of the permit application is we have a rendering of the sign. And so, you know, the sign manufacturer is going to provide that square footage on there.
Right.
You know, to.
Eighty percent with the address on it?
I'm good, I'd be good with that.
It should just be the number on it.
Number, number, okay, yeah, number, yeah, I can see, obviously.
Well.
What street you're on.
It depends where this is going to be, where the number is appropriate, but most of them should have a number on it, but I don't know if we want to require it.
Requiring it, because you could have a sign on your building that has your name, address.
There again, they could, they could apply for a variance.
So.
They could, they could go for a variance.
I think that if we were to ask the fire guys, they would say they would want to see numbers on everything.
But that wouldn't be just on this type of sign, that's, I guess what I'm saying is if we're doing numbers, it should be something other than on this one kind of sign.
Yes.
I don't, wouldn't want it just on this one, I guess. But that is important for fire and safety. Now with GPS, it's become a lot less important for a lot of people, but you're still not sure you're there.
I would love to see more numbers on signs, to be quite honest, with GPS, it's more confusing now than before.
Well, then you still know you're in the right place.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah.
All right, so I, I think we, we got some, what we'll do is we'll give you some visual representations between the two, so you can see what's.
You know, you guys have been talking about. But clutter is clutter, no matter, you can make it cluttered with twenty percent or eighty percent or a hundred percent, you know, it's not going to change where you can get cluttered or not. Because you use smaller letters and make it much more cluttered.
It's true. Yeah, the other option, you know, and we can talk about it more, you know, have minimum letter size, right, for legibility purposes, you can regulate on that because you're, it's a.
Listen to the next line on page fifteen about minimum letter size, could you see that when you drive by at fifty-five mile an hour?
Well, that's not intended to be for fifty-five miles.
Yeah.
There are some places that are signs very close to that, that are on major roads, but.
So this, we were not proposing any changes, you know, for these directory signs, we just sort of put a visual representation of what the ordinance would allow. I don't think that there's really a outcry for changing, you know, that, but we wanted to put it in there to show you, you know, what those regulations are. Same for off-premise directional signs. Those are what's in there right now. So the last change is on page seventeen, which is the last page.
Off-premise?
Yep.
Where can they put this then? Do they have to, on other property owners, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so they'd have to have basically permission from the other, okay, so it's just not on their own property?
Correct.
All right, makes sense.
Well, it could be their property like at the beginning of their development.
Sure, yeah.
And if they're pointing to go buy homes down the street in their own subdivision.
Realistically, it's going to be like a church, you know, with someone that has property at the corner, and, you know, a church this way.
These are wonderful when you try and find someplace, in some cases. I want to encourage them actually, personally.
So the last one, you know, menu boards, right, for your fast food restaurants, how are we going to regulate that without calling a menu board as well? They're informational boards, that's what they are, and, you know, the recommendation is that you treat them as part of a drive-through use, not a, you know, fast food use, so if a bake needed one for whatever reason, or if a drive-through cleaner's needed one, you know, it's attached with the drive-through, not the use itself.
People come in and say, we're not food, should get something different, right?
Why are we regulating these is I guess the question.
Because do you want to have that by the room?
Well, it's going to be part of the site plan if they're.
Right, is it on the site plan?
They're going to, they're going to spec all that out.
But once again, if you have it in saying, here we are, does that not make the site plan a little bit easier, as you said, they'll say, boom, here it is.
Right.
You know, if you want a variance.
You know, and some of these, you know, are industry standard, right, so, so the people who would be installing these, you know, they know this. And so we're not putting any additional restrictions on them, you know, for, again, right, it gets back to getting quality development as opposed to, you know.
The only question I would have is that some fast food restaurants now have multiple drive-throughs, so this, how we're defining this, should it be through one drive-through lane? Because like you go to McDonald's.
Right.
And Holly, I think they've got two menu, two menu boards, one for each lane.
That's.
There's some on that.
Now, the part I dislike is where you have to get to where you actually order to be able to see it. I like the menu board where you're waiting in your car so you make the decision.
Yeah, because there's actually four.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's two in each lane at.
I think it makes sense to have.
That's a site plan.
We can't get another business.
Well, I know, but I. We are when we regulate signs.
Yeah, you, or you can't, and you can't, you can get, you, you can force even the corporates to conform to local standards.
So maybe the compromise, right?
Or they could take it to court.
No, they won't, is, you know, you can have two if it's not available from the road.
Right, right.
Right, because if it's behind the building, then really, who cares?
Now, see, now in the village, we made them conform to, because I was on the village planning at that time, we made them conform to our lighting standards. They wanted to put in their, their McDonald's.
Right.
Traditional lights, and we held our ground and they put in what we asked them to. So you can, I mean, it's not a thing where they can take you to court, it's, if they come into your community, they.
Are we taking the one up?
Yeah, so, so I, I think with the condition that it's not available from the road.
Right.
Because it gets back to signs to, to your visual.
At least like bank or anybody else.
If they want, if they need it, then so be it. Not visible from the road. And that gets back to your design of the building, right?
Right.
You know, there was something, I want to ask, I should have asked earlier, when they took out, on the Renaissance Festival, when they took out the camping.
Yep.
Now, that was camping, that also includes camping for vendors, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to.
Nobody lives in the buildings where they have vendor sites.
All right, let's move on to reports, we'll start with Glenn.
Take it in you.
Well.
No actions.
I guess I kind of lost on the wood tree, the tree ordinance issue, but I think it still came up to the issue after eleven pages, we still don't fully understand, because after it was passed, people were still asking questions about who it applied to. I think I missed a point a little bit that I didn't get across, we got it limited to commercial, but that is the one place where they almost have to clear cut a spot to do a commercial development. So we're only restricting the ones that have to do and pay for a tree survey and have requirements, and I understand, we want trees to be replaced, but they're the ones that are going to have to clear cut the place, so it's like, I'm not sure why we have that ordinance just for that, I guess would be my point. And again, somebody thought, I won't mention names as it passed, that it would apply to subdivisions and it does not.
And it actually does, I'll get into that when we, when Mike.
Your time comes up?
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay, but that's not the way it was understood when it was presented there.
Well, yeah, I will address that.
I'm good, so you guys can go for it.
AC?
By all means.
Lloyd, help me out here.
Just wanted to let you know, Pat and I did work at the Christmas in Action, and we did two houses this year. The house that we worked on on La Grange, we put a whole new roof on the house, we took out a new buff round pool, repaired the deck, painted some fences, cleaned up the yard, did some work inside the house, I'm not sure what was done. The other house on Sherman Street, they put a brand new furnace in, compliments of D Kramer, with the furnace and the install. I don't know, I didn't see that house, but there's probably a roof there as well.
Oh, yeah, roofing, siding, and painting and that, and put a whole new underneath roof on their porch and that form and that.
Oh, it's great.
The homeowner on La Grange was eighty years old, lost her husband a year ago, of course, she couldn't afford to do any of this work, so that's what we do. So it was very productive this year, again.
Lot of fun.
You forgot to report the illegal signs you had up too.
Well, yeah.
Well, the village, the village has different rules. Okay. A couple of things, Supervisor Colas and I yesterday went, before we went and played Frogger in the middle of the road. We were in Flint and attended a seminar about parks and recreation, master planning, and grants. And learned a whole bunch of things, for example, I didn't know that money from the Michigan Park Pass that, you know, you get with your license plate. I thought that that money would all go to state parks, and the truth is that local parks can apply for grant money out of that. Also learned that Consumers Energy actually has grants out there for tree planting. I think, don't hold me to the number, but I think it was twenty, up to twenty-five hundred dollars that you can get from Consumers Energy for, for planting trees.
How was that?
No, the community, the community.
How close can we climb into their polls?
Yeah, so.
Why?
But it was, it was, it was a real informative, a real informative couple of hours, and came away with some good information. Now, on the Woodlands, so what happened is, well, Pat, as he was talking and explaining reasons why we, you know, the township should consider it, brought up the fact that residential developers would be held to, to some standards. And some members on the commission, or on the, on the Board of Trustees were confused by that, and part of the problem was, during their deliberations, they removed the verbiage that was applied to residential development, because they thought that it was a commercial based on the district that the activity was taking place and not on the activity itself. The Woodlands Protection Ordinance is on commercial activity, whether it, that activity actually occurs in the commercial zoning district has nothing to do with it. And that's where there was some confusion at the board level, partly because, you know, they weren't here to listen to our discussions. So, Pat was correct, I was correct, it was funny, because Supervisor Colas called me into his office the next morning and started to chew me out, saying, you know, what in the world were you thinking? Apparently somebody had come into the office and called me everything up, down, sideways of a damn fool, and so.
Wasn't me.
Because he thought, well, you know, how does your chairman not know the difference between commercial and residential? So we got on the phone with Mike, and I, honestly, I texted Stacy and asked her, you know, during the meeting, I'm like, am I, are Pat and I crazy? And Stacy had understood it the same way that I did, and so we called Mike, and Mike kind of confirmed that, so.
Are you crazy?
I will, I will look into the camera to acknowledge that I'm crazy, but no. So the bottom line is, I believe, Mike, step in if I'm wrong, that you, there's going to be a little bit, just a little bit of clarification coming forward in what the residential verbiage means in the ordinance. But it does, it, what we passed did apply to residential developers from the standpoint until they, once they sell a house, then it's off our, off our hands. What it protects us for is if they come in and, and they're going to work on getting the surety bonds. If a residential developer comes in and clear cuts property, and then the market falls out and they walk away, we will have a surety bond in place to replant some of the landscaping that has been taken out.
And Glenn brought up a good point earlier about the fact that when one front of the board, they threw on three different things we could vote on, and I'm like, no, that's not what we recommended, and it was the opinion of the majority of the board members was, is that they had the right to do that, that they could check all three of them, which was fine, which I'm not, you know, not arguing that. The only thing was, as I said before the meeting, as it turned out, I said, that's going to be confusing.
Well, Pat was trying to get back to what, what we were looking at.
Right, right, right. Yeah, yeah, it's like, you know, that, that wasn't happening, so.
So I found that confusing, because I didn't think we approved three, you know, they could check whatever they want, but we proposed one thing, so why did they have three things?
And that is something that I would strongly, next time we come up with something in front of them, that it's like, this is what we proposed, we're not discussing, you know.
So I will be at the next Township Board meeting to help, you know, explain what the ordinance is about, and going forward, you know, we're going to make sure that we are there, we, unfortunately, we had a conflict with, with another community at the same time, and, you know, we just didn't have enough notice to be able to trade out positions so that we could have someone here.
And I will say that I felt that I kind of had to do a haste, well, when you were there, it was kind of one of those situations, it's like, well, you know, for me to go back through and try to convince the other four that, okay, this is the way it was, I wasn't seeing that going anywhere quick. So it was, you know, not one of those things where, you know, it was like conceding any point or anything, it was just more of a case of, needs to be clarified, it's not going to be done that night, that was.
Well, and part of it, I'll, I'll take it on me, it's not proper protocol from somebody from the audience in that situation to raise their hand and, and stand up, but as Supervisor Colas told me, in a situation like that, I should have, I should have jumped up as they were removing that verbiage and said, wait a second. So that's.
What did they do? They fabled it?
No, they, they passed it, but they passed it taking out the language that protected, or that covered commercial, residential developers. Because they looked at it and said, why are we looking, talking about residential when this is a commercial, thinking that it only applied to the commercial district.
Right.
Instead of realizing that it applied to commercial activity and developed. Instead of realizing that it applied to commercial activity, and developing a neighborhood is a commercial activity, because that developer is turning around doing it with the intention of selling it.
And there were some on there that said, well, residential development is residential, and that, that was, that was the other, you know, like, how do you argue that point?
That's why they fired it by the end of the meeting, so that was the way they looked at it.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
So, um, keep track of what Magna's doing down North Holly Road, because that's a classic case. They're gonna end up with a very nice structure there, I'm sure they're gonna do landscaping, I'm not sure what Grand Blank really requires of it, but that's a massive project, but.
Clearcut.
That shows what they have to do to do a development, like a commercial development.
Right.
And obviously, they got rid of a lot of trees, but a lot of more scrubby trees and work, but anyway, when it gets done, it will be much more attractive. It'll be a commercial structure, but it will, they will still landscape it in.
I mean, Shannon said that, yeah, Shannon was another example.
That's why I have a hard time with that ordinance.
That needed to be, needed to be.
Did I read that right? When they're done, it's gonna be five acres under a roof?
I don't know how big, it's, it's a, well, it's probably a thirty, forty acre parcel there, that they have almost cleared, I went by today, and they have it almost all cleared now. So it's a big thing. There are three buildings there that I think they own already, and so it's a big.
Does anybody see what's going on at Dixie and Seventy-Five, they clearcut?
Yeah. The giant house back there that, uh, nobody knew was there.
With the pool that they're in hate it. What are they building there?
What's that?
I'd be so mad if I was that house.
I know.
You see it right in their windows, they don't have one window covered.
Yeah, there's a, and on the, uh, east side of the road, there's a giant house that used to be behind woods. And, I mean, it's gotta be a five thousand square foot, it's a palace.
It's a palace.
With giant windows that they probably were overlooking forest and deer, and now they're looking at Dixie Highway.
No, they're over at the pool.
Yeah.
They can see further now.
There's no more skinny dipping going on in that sun pool, that's for sure. All right, let's move on, public comment. Angie, you've been here all night. Come on, man!
We watered down.
Fine!
I got a public comment.
You have a public comment?
Yeah, it's not a report, can I give a comment?
Yes, you may.
Comment for the public.
A comment for the public, okay.
You have all seen about the, uh, this Friday. Oh, camera ready there. No, but this is, uh, I'm doing a lot with the arts community in Pineak area, because I think in Pineak, uh, which is gaining more funding and development, there's always gonna be somewhere to go, have a good time, so right now, since it's downtown, they lost, what is it, the Eats Beats, I wasn't in.
Arts Beats.
Yeah, to roll over, but now it's, it's a rebirth, so, uh, I'm on the planning committee here, and we've been really making sure this is gonna be a good time. Just hope it doesn't rain, so, everybody sees that, I don't have to say it, uh, there you go. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
One more comment on the signs, outside of the sign that says Village Offices, Board, Board of Education, it doesn't have Holly Town.
Village of Holly.
Village of Holly, but doesn't have, but we meet here, our board meets here, right?
But our offices aren't here.
Yeah.
No, that's.
Yes, that may change one day.
Don't put things on record.
I said, I said may, it may change, it, it, I didn't say will, I said may. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to close, we're at nine o'clock. Thank you, everybody.
Nine oh five.
Whatever. Good meeting, everybody.